Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see so many people here in person. We haven't had this room filled in years. Not an exaggeration. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's six P M. Call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to give us a roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Proton Emilio?
Yeah.
Council members Coletti?
Here.
McAdams? Paduri?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Tomlinson?
Here.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Same, Mr. Mayor. Second.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams? Paduri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is a Blue Zones Project Monterey County presentation by Kendra Howell. Welcome.
Staff and the audience, it's so wonderful to be here with such a fantastic group of kids especially. And as you hear more about Blue Zones, you'll realize that natural movement is certainly part of what we do. And so this is fantastic representation. I understand maybe there's a slide presentation that the clerk has.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. And then I'll just go ahead and let you know to advance. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Kendra Howell. I'm Senior Policy Lead for Blue Zones Project Monterey County. I want to acknowledge we also have tonight. Tanya Roos is our Community Program Manager for the Peninsula Cities is here. And then Mr. Al Sacks, he's a resident of Pacific Grove. Many of you probably know him. He just celebrated his eightieth birthday and he's one of our big Blue Zone volunteers for the community. So I'm glad Al could join us. But I always want to recognize that this is a... Some people think it's a nonprofit. Some people think it's a corporation. It's actually an organization that is privately funded by the three sponsors you see here. Salinas Valley Memorial Healthcare System, Taylor Farms and Montage Health. So again, it's a privately funded but publicly endorsed program. And I say that in the sense that we couldn't do what we do without the support and the engagement from leaders in the community throughout the county, including cities. So again, it's a privilege to be here. So next slide. So this is the formal definition of Blue Zones Project. It's a geographically based, community by community, comprehensive approach to well-being that drives measurable improvement in key metrics. I always like to say it's a health and wellness initiative that works with a whole community to help make the easy, the healthy choice, the easy choice. It started with a gentleman named Dan Butner, who was a National Geographic Fellow and Explorer. And he and his team looked at places in the world where people were living the longest. Where were those places that the highest, that had the highest percentage of centenarians? They did this study. They called it Blue Zones, not for any scientific name. It was just because they circled those original Blue Zones on the map with a blue pen. But he had his first published work in National Geographic. This was in two thousand and five. This remains actually the third highest selling issue for National Geographic because we all want to know how to live longer. But that's how Blue Zones actually really got started. So next slide. So the five original Blue Zones that they identified, four are outside of North America. And we actually have one right down south in Loma Linda. So you have Sardinia, Italy, Ikaria, Greece, Okinawa, Japan, then Decoya Peninsula, and then of course, Loma Linda down in Southern California. So people that were living in these places, they weren't doing things that we might associate with being healthy, like working out or dieting or things like that. They were just living their life. And again, they were living to be a hundred at a much higher rate than anything that we certainly see in Northern, in North America. Next slide. So they identified the commonalities that were happening in these places. They identified nine commonalities. We refer to these as the Power Nine. And they really are grouped, as you can see, into four categories. So first of all, moving naturally. How can the environment nudge people into physical activity that doesn't mean going to the gym? Gardening certainly counts, walking, biking, skating at a skate park, playing with our family. Those are all things that contribute to health and wellness. Having the right outlook is certainly important. It's been studied that people who can define their sense of purpose actually live longer and happier. Certainly eating wisely, that's something we all know. However, there's little tricks and things that we can do to encourage healthier eating. And then of course, belonging, surrounding ourselves with people that make us happy. A faith-based community certainly contributes to that, but so do social clubs like rotaries, chamber events. Again, things that families can do together, skate parks and things like that. So those are the nine commonalities that they identified in these places called Blue Zones. So next slide. So the driving force to bring this project to Monterey County was really, again, the two healthcare systems, Memorial Hospital and Montage Health, and then of course, Taylor Farms, which is a fantastic corporate partner in our community. Many people don't know that approximately forty-five percent of Monterey County residents are either pre-diabetic, which think that can be managed through lifestyle changes. And as you can imagine, that it's a huge driving force for healthcare and people's ability to have active and healthy lives. So that's what was the inspiration for bringing a project, a project like this to Monterey County. We started in Salinas. We did a site assessment in two thousand and eighteen to determine if there was interest and support. We kicked off in Salinas in two thousand and nineteen. However, the intent was always to bring this to be a countywide project. We expanded into a peninsula office in two thousand and twenty. And then we are just now getting ready to kick off events for King City and Gonzales this weekend. So we're expanding into South County. But we've already been doing a lot of work around the county as a whole. And that's why we're very excited to talk to you here in Pacific Grove. So next slide. So the way that Blue Zones Project works with the community is we work around what we call the life radius. And we think about where do we spend most of our time? It's in the community where we live. We go to school there. We maybe work close by. We certainly contribute by going to restaurants and doing things around the community. So we work with the community around what we call the three Ps. So we work with people on an individual basis. We work with places where we all spend our time. And then another very important piece of that is we work with city leadership around policy opportunities. So next slide. So if you think about how do we engage with people? The word that you see there, MOI, that's actually a Japanese word that means people that come together around a common interest or a common purpose. So a skating MOI, walking MOI, potluck MOIs. We, so these are the ways we engage with people individually, helping them to connect with their community by offering volunteer opportunities. We're so excited. We're just now starting to do cooking classes again, cooking demonstrations, things like that. So working with people individually. Next slide. Second P is, as I mentioned, is the places. So we engage with schools, we engage with work sites, restaurants, grocery stores. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the faith-based and civic organizations. Next slide. And then finally, this is one of the areas that I work in around policy. And as you all know, this really has an opportunity to really make long-lasting change in a community because oftentimes, policy then lives on beyond the stakeholders. So the three areas of policy that we work in are around the built environment. So the physical space around us. How do we support projects in the community that increase access to open space, increase the ability for roads to be safe for people in all mobility, not just in a car? How do we create environments that are safe so people can get out and move more naturally? We certainly work around tobacco policy. And you are fantastic models for the county for what you've done for your tobacco control. So you're really a leader and something that we can then showcase to other communities that we work with. But we're doing a lot with tobacco policy. There's a lot, as you've heard, going on with flavored vaping and things like that. And the third piece of policy is around food. And that's really food systems, food environments. How can we get healthy food to the people who most need it in our communities? So I mentioned cooking demonstrations. We're starting to do those now at food distribution sites with the food bank. Next slide. So this is just a fun bunch of pictures. I wanted you to see. The picture in the middle is actually the city of Salinas. They recently became a Blue Zones approved work site. We would love to work with the city of Pacific Grove to have city hall staff participate. You'll see us out at a lot of events. The picture up in the corner is what we call our spin art bike. So kids can get on the bike and you put a paper and some paint in the barrel and they can make spin art. We do a lot of cleanups around tobacco litter. We're so excited. We have so many restaurants that are already Blue Zones approved. The gentleman up in the left-hand corner is with La Princesa Grocery Market in Salinas. So he gets to put his approved sticker on. And then you can see we do a lot of gardening things. We work with schools around a lot of gardening projects for their schools. And so the final slide. And this is just really our website and a QR code for members of the audience. Again, this is Patricia from the city of Salinas. They just were approved last month. And so again, very glad to be able to talk to you tonight. We really look forward to working with the city and the residents around engaging more with this project. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Any council comments? Councilmember Paduri?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Kendra, for coming here. If I could borrow a statement from the Blue Zones Project. The, there is a secret to living longer. And now you guys know the secret. That's actually a tagline there. But as the council may know, like earlier this year, I had brought forth the resolution for active people, healthy nations. And really, this is under that same umbrella. We can all do better to live healthy. And I wanted to bring Blue Zones here. I've seen their work in the community in more ways than one. Some of you folks may already be aware of Blue Zones. But my intent is to take this as an exercise for the community to see what Blue Zones can bring in, can bring into the community. And I'll bring in more items as we move along to under the umbrella of Blue Zones. I think it's really fantastic on a lot of counts from a work perspective because the staff can use it from a community perspective because the community definitely needs it. And also from a restaurant side because we are, where everything is interconnected. And Blue Zones brings that interconnectedness to the table. So thank you again for what you're doing to the community. And we look forward to working together.
Thank you.
And thanks again. And we look forward to hearing more about the Blue Zones and your success going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I look forward to it. Thank you.
We'll now go to council and staff announcements. Mr. Pyrick?
We have no reportable action from our closed session this evening. I have no other announcements.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
No, no announcements, Mayor.
And council announcements? Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I am so excited to see so many friends in the audience, especially our school-aged residents. Specifically to our young members this evening, thank you for being here and for being fearless. Everyone up here, all of these adults, we are here to serve you and your city and state and federal elected officials and government exist to work for you, all funded by your parents' taxpayers' dollars. And that's another conversation. But when you're eighteen years old, please vote. And until you're eighteen, email us, your elected officials, and use your voice and your words because they are powerful. Thank you.
I've got a couple of announcements. As far as Car Week is concerned, in Pacific Grove, two car events down and two to go tomorrow. It's the Legends of the Autobahn, and that's out at the golf course. And then on Friday, we have the PG Auto Rally sponsored by the Rotary, and that is downtown. And, oh, and one other one. We have a Monarch Butterfly Talk. That's at the Monarch Butterfly Sanctuary. That's on Friday, on next week, August twenty-sixth at eleven o'clock, if you're interested. I'm now moving on to general public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any matters of the city, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for serving the community. As Ginny said, that was a nice little welcoming to the children and the adults. My name is Vince Tumanello. I'm a local PG resident. And I want to thank the council for helping to facilitate these car events this week. I think it's fabulous. We had a really big turnout yesterday. We had a good turnout today. This is what, this brings vitality to the community. And as you looked at the number of people and the quality of the people, it was a really good showing. You know, we didn't have any, didn't have any problems that I know about with the police or any disturbances or fights or drinking and so forth. So it's a really good event. It's well done. You may have noticed, if you haven't, if you use Facebook, I know a lot of people don't. But if you use Facebook, there's a local Pacific Grove Facebook page that I want to recommend to you. It's simply called Pacific Grove, comma, C A. Pacific Grove, comma, C A. And there's a lot of beautiful photographs and nice information on there. Some of you may have seen that Pacific Grove, the town of Pacific Grove, was selected as one of the quintessential classic coastal communities in California. And it was a beautiful story with some photographs about that. I think that was a great honor that we received as a city. And you get some compliments for participating in the leadership of that community. So thank you so much. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward? Welcome.
My name is Al Sacks and I'm a team member of the Blue Zones. And what I wanted to say is, at my party in Asilamar, I invited the Blue Zones to come because there are a lot of people who want to change their eating methods and have heart disease and so forth. And so they came and they talked to the guests there. And I'm going to use my yard if they want to do any cooking demonstrations or if anybody in the community is interested. Because a year ago, I went into the doctor and I found out I had four blocked arteries, two eighty-five percent, two seventy-five percent. They wanted me to have immediate open-heart surgery. And I said, no, I had read enough about the plant-based diets. And so I'd been fine for a year. Cholesterol went to sixty, weight dropped, blood pressure a hundred and fifteen, and China disappeared. So I am firm believer that food makes a huge, huge difference, which is part of the Blue Zones diet. And so I'm very happy to be a part of that and have people in my neighborhood or anyone come in and be kind of an arm to their program to put this to work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please come, come forward.
I gotta move this down a little bit. Okay. Hi, councilmembers, Mayor. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to public comments today. My name is Alex White. I'm a member of the Pacific Grove Skate Park Project, along with Emily Hasselbauer and John Hasselbauer, and a bunch of support here in the audience. I just wanted to come up and voice my support of the skate park project. And I want to show a little example to the kids. A lot of the kids have a lot to say about the skate park. So basically, just kind of come up here. You guys can say whatever you want. I'm not putting words in your mouth. But my name is Alex White. I'm a lifelong resident of Pacific Grove, California. I was a professional skateboarder and now I work as a brand manager, a commentator and a lot of, and I'm a mom too. I have two sons here who are also skateboarders. So I'm in favor of a skate park. And I'd really hope that the council can work together with the community to come up with a good site and a really functioning skate park for all levels and all abilities. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any of the kids want to say hello? Otherwise, who else? You just want to come, you want to just come forward and say hello? That'd be great.
Okay. Hi, I'm Noah. I go to PG High School and I've been skateboarding for like ten years. Go to Monterey Skate Park all the time. And I think it'd be a great addition to PG to build a skate park in our area. I think it's a great place for kids to build relationships and safely have fun. And I don't know, enjoy the day and get outside, not be on video games all day. Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Henry Vivas. And I was just thinking, it would be a great place to hang out after school or something like that and just skate. And it would be a nice place because the closest one is like a drive away. And that's only like, it takes a bit and I can't drive yet.
Aw, man. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wyatt Hasselbauer. And I love skateboarding. And I really think we should build a skate park in PG. It's a great place for people to hang out. And I met some really good people from skate parks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Randy Randall. And I would like a skate park in PG because I think it would just be a good place for like people to like interact with each other and just play outside more. And it would be a good place to like hang out after school. So I would really like a skate park.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Diaz. And I really love a skate park because you can make new friends. It's a great place to hang out. Like, there's not like, people can't smoke and it's safe for kids to hang out and get outside.
Hello, my name is Milo. And this is about my brother named Noah. And he wrote, and it would just be a good place to have a park in PG. I mean, fresh air, no smoking. I mean, it's pretty darn good. And, and besides, and besides, my house is really close to PG, to this, to city, our council. My, my house is like at Forest Avenue. And if you, and if you feel like stealing something, just get it out of your head. And then, so yeah, it's really close. My brother really likes skate parks. And so I think it would just be super great to build a skate park at city, at city hall here. I don't know, city council, city hall, block, block. So, yeah. Bye.
All right, thank you.
Hello. My name is Vanessa Diaz. And I think we should have a skate park for multiple reasons because you can build friendships there and you can meet new people. And I love to skate. So I think it would be an awesome place to just like hang out after school if you want to go somewhere. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Callie. And I think it would be great to have a skate park, not just for being on skateboards and rolling around, but also for being on skates and making new friends. Like roller skates.
Hi, my name is Eli Hasselbauer. And I would like a skate park in Pacific Grove because it's a great place to have fun and just learn a lot of new things. Also, it's my birthday.
Hi, my name is Mia. And I think it would be great to have a skate park in Pacific Grove because kids can learn how to skate and they can have a great time. And I just think it'd be really cool for kids to learn how to skateboard. And like, I don't know, I think it'd be pretty cool for kids to learn how to skateboard and do other stuff in the skate park. And I think it'd be really good for this community.
Thank you.
I'm nineteen, I'm five years old. And it would be really cool to have a skate park. And I love skating. And I also have a skateboard too. And pads.
Yeah. It was just, it's a great place for kids to get together, obviously, and be brave, right? Do fun things?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm an adult, just an FYI. I know I'm the same size. To clear that up. My name is Kelsey Richmond. My fiance Tyler Ellis and I own Captain and Stoker, which is a local coffee shop and roastery dedicated to the community. We both grew up at skate parks. Tyler rides BMX and I'm always cheering him on from the sidelines. Although in middle school, I could absolutely drop in on skateboards. So I have that. The skate park has always felt like home to both of us for as long as we could remember. Ten years ago in Michigan, we were spending all of our free time at a local park, enjoying the outdoors and good times with our friends. We traveled a lot before landing here in Monterey. And the biggest downside for us is not having a great park, not just for Tyler, but for the kids we hope to eventually have. There's so much to learn at skate parks. And I think Angela Lee Duckworth's TED Talk titled "Grit: The Power of Passion and Perseverance" says it best. While working as a teacher, Angela came to the conclusion that education needs a better understanding of learning from a motivational and psychological perspective. So she went to graduate school to become a psychologist. She studied children and adults in all different challenging settings that we all face throughout life. With every study, her question was, who is successful here and why? Angela said, in all those very different contexts, one characteristic emerged as a significant predictor, prediction of success. And it wasn't social intelligence, it wasn't good looks, physical health, and it wasn't IQ. It was grit. Grit is passion and perseverance for long, very long-term goals. Grit is having stamina. Grit is sticking with your future day in and day out, not just for the week, not just for the month, but for years and working really hard to make that future a reality. Grit is living life like it's a marathon and not a sprint. She then went on to study the grit of thousands of high schoolers. A year later, turns out grittier kids were significantly more likely to graduate. This TED Talk ends with her questioning how we can teach grit to kids. And trust me when I say that there's no better place for this than a skate park. Failing at something over and over again with your friends cheering you on to keep trying, you're eventually going to land that trick and it's going to feel incredible knowing how hard you worked for it. Tyler certainly knows, certainly has a lot of grit from all his years of failing and succeeding on his bike. And that has everything to do with why Captain and Stoker is still going strong through the many hurdles we've experienced over the last four years. And I'm going to cry already. I don't know. So obviously, we support the skate park and we do our best to raise money to build it the right way for all action sports and all skill levels. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Logan Landry. Is it working? And yeah. Okay. Hi, I'm Logan Landry and I'm a Pacific Grove High School student, friends with Noah Gary over here. So in PG, we try to skate. We try to skate a lot of spots, but there isn't that many. So a skate park would be nice, obviously. And obviously, traveling the distance all the way over to Monterey, that is a drive. And we have all these kids here that want to learn how to do it. They don't have to drive perfect right after-school activity, get some fresh air, like they all said. And it's really just like an opportunity to build relationships. Like Noah said, you can meet a lot of new friends, try to have fun together and do whatever like you like to do. Skateboarding is something I've fallen in love with really because it's just something you can progress at over time. And it's just something you can always enjoy by learning new things and like learning new tricks. And as you progress over time, you get better, you become happier with your skating. And it's really something amazing for these kids to learn. And as you progress over time, you get better, you become happier with your skating and it's really something amazing for these kids to learn. So I'm all in for it. So, thank you.
I brought my little guy with me again just because he loves the limelight, but um, my son's back here at twenty years old. He's been skating since he was six years old and I just, I'm very passionate about this. I'm, I love seeing that PG supports sports so much. You know, I mean, we've got the the kids playing baseball and they're fixing up the pool at the high school and they did the field and I just, I'm, I'm one hundred percent into seeing skateboarding have as much validity in our town as those sports do. And I just, I don't know. I mean, I've seen his passion, you know, I think everybody has that thing that they love, like, okay, you go out and read books or you walk on the beach or you go ride your bike on the bike path and it's just as valid as getting out there on your board. And he's just grown up to be such an amazing young man and all of his friends are wonderful people and I love that stigma, you know, is not what the agenda is here. It's giving kids a special place to be because I don't know, it makes me emotional too, you know, just growing up and seeing how much pleasure it's brought him, how much, you know, every single day, if you're having a bad day, you go out and skate. And if there's something that kids can do for their mental health, not just their physical health, but their mental health, I think that you know, it's wonderful. So this makes me very excited, very happy and I can't wait to see where the skate park, you know, is going to be and I just one hundred percent support it and am very happy to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, young man, one, one shot. Welcome.
That's hard to follow. My name is Holly. I'm a Pacific Grove resident. I'm a mom of two daughters, one at Pacific Grove High School and one at Robert Downe. And I'm also a roller skater. So it makes me really excited to see these little girls talking about roller skating. And maybe three or four years ago, I started roller skating in skate parks and I never really knew how much it was going to change my life. As an adult, it's really hard to make friends once school is done. If you're not going to college or you're not working in an environment where you can meet people, even for us adults, we need something. And I've met more amazing people in my life in the last three to four years than I have in the fifteen years since I've graduated from high school. I think as much too for the kids, we, it's good to show them as adults that we can have fun too. We can do things that are positive as well and I think the skate park would be really good at that.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Hannah Breimer. I've been skating for two years, but I had never skated before that. The pandemic really put a hitch in all of our lives and I wasn't able to do anything active. I was a weightlifter for five and a half years previously and then I wasn't able to go to a gym. I gained weight really rapidly as most people did during a pandemic and I needed a way to find. I had just moved here also. I didn't know anybody in Monterey. So I moved to Monterey, pandemic started and I had no way to be fit or meet people. The skate park really truly changed my life. I had no community before living here. I mean, once I moved here, I didn't know anybody. And so the skate park and roller skating truly changed my life and it made me want to stay in Monterey. I had nothing else really tying me here and the skate park community has been truly life-changing for me. And I'm thirty years old and I'm watching these kids up here talk about how excited they are for this park. But really, it's also for adults, it's for people in their, you know, twenties and thirties. Like I just learned a totally new skill in the last two years and I'm doing it almost every day and it has completely transformed me. So if you guys take that little mental health into consideration when you guys are thinking about this, it's really, really important for people to get out there, find something physical, some fresh air. Yeah, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, so my name is Samantha Perez. I've been a local of the eight three run forever. But my dad had worked in the fields. He was the type of person where the weekends, you would go through them and you'd point them out. You'd also be able to see the lack of access for the community. You'd be able to see the fact that in all throughout the county, we actually don't have any really great skate parks. You have to go all the way to Santa Cruz or travel all the way to Pinzales. There's nothing that really has great safety. If you were to skate completely every aspect of Monterey Park, you can't actually, you can hurt yourself really badly. To the point where you can break your wrists, break your ankles. It's not what happened here, but this is work. But it's also a safety hazard. The ones that we already have are not good enough. They're not good enough for our community. They're not good enough for the people that are trying their best to be at the best in this community. If you want people to stay, if you want tourism, how about keep the people here that are already here? Keep the people wanting to be here, keep the feeling like they are supported. You want tourism and you plod it, that's amazing, but what about the people that are already living here? They have to travel out of their own county to get good access for their sport. But there's like thirty tennis courts. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carson Kearney at Pacific Grove High School. And I just wanted to say that everyone I've met throughout the years has been through skateboarding. And it's pretty hard to get there when you can't drive. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hazel. I'm ten years old. During the pandemic, I didn't really have anything to do. And I didn't really live nearby any of my friends that I knew of. And then I moved to this other house and then I was like, I know you. And it turned out, there's like three of my friends that live there. It's like, what should I do during the pandemic? And they said, try skating. We had this parking lot by our house and it had kind of a slope. And so we were like, okay, I guess this is a skate park for us. Um, it wasn't that safe because there was always cars going into it. And then across the street, we also had the bowling alley. So we would go over the speed bumps. So there's also a lot of potholes in that. It wasn't the best, but it was what we had. So I think if those three friends were right here right now, I think they would agree with me in saying we need a new skate park. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi there, my name is Kristen Sales. I'm here both as a roller skater and as a mom of two kids who enjoy skating and roller skating. I started skating again during the pandemic and I have skated on pretty much every single flat surface that I could find in Pacific Grove, every single legal one. I'm not admitting to anything else, but the thing is, I have seen so many of these faces out there. And what the young lady who just talked about, who was just here, said is true. There are a lot of flat spaces, but not a lot of safe places that are available all the time. So I'm asking please if the city council could support this whenever it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Debbie Beck, you know, I'm a native. One, it is great to see everyone on the dais, by the way. And I just want to commend these young people who got up here to speak because a lot of adults can't do this. But I wanted to say, you know, my mother's going to be eighty-nine years old. She lives in Pacific Grove and growing up, her fond memories were going to the skating rink on Grand Avenue. We used to have a skating rink in town. My memories were going to, on Del Monte, we had a skating rink there. So until I came to this meeting, I was thinking skate park, but there are so many options to the skate park. It could be rollerblading, it can be roller skating. So, you know, I hope our council moving forward can find a location. I know it's going to be tough because we're working on the housing location as well. But again, I want to commend these kids and I think we should have kids at every council meeting because I've never seen so many smiles in here. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Devin Keller. Also a Pacific Grove native. When I first moved here, I lived right down the street from Sixty-Eight Skate, for all you who know what that is. It was our skate shop that was here and we were so eager to skate around town that we actually built a skate park behind Sixty-Eight Skate. And it was very hard. I'd get in trouble, like every time I'd go out and skate through town because you couldn't skate there and there's nowhere that was actually safe. You know, it's one of these little kids that were skating around, just wanting to have fun and hang out with my friends. So yeah, I think it's very important that we put a skate park here in Pacific Grove for the kids, for the community to be a little bit more lively. We've always talked about that in PG. Just for the community and for these kids. My niece is ten years old and she's getting into roller skating and she's getting really excited about this. So we all want to see it pull through for the community, for the kids, for us adults now who were these kids who wanted this way back when it was a dream and now it's going to happen. So.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Kirby Gary. I'm known around skate parks as Noah and Ben's dad, more than anything, but so Noah, Noah Gary, my son, my oldest son spoke. My job is I'm the athletic director at Cal State Monterey Bay. And so I couldn't come from a more traditional sports background. So I'd like to just take one minute to speak on that because I think my wife and I made the decision a long time ago to meet our kids where they are and, and they, we've been here for fifteen years. So Noah's essentially whole life has been here. We have Ben who's fifteen, Addie who's thirteen, and Grace who's nine. And they've literally grown up at the skate park in one way or another, in all, anything with wheels has been told tonight. So we've watched them grow up and develop and learn how to fail and how to get back up. And we do the team sport thing too. And so, but it's just been, it's been an amazing experience for our family. And we travel the state and we look for skate parks everywhere we go. So I think that also speaks to the, to the visitors to our community as well because skate parks will draw people to the community, families to the community as well because we do not go somewhere without skateboards or scooters in the car. And so we've traveled the state, the region, really nationally, looking for skate parks as well. So I'm obviously here a hundred percent in support of this initiative and thankful for the turnout and really proud of my son for getting up here to talk because he doesn't do that either. So that makes me emotional that much. That's how much it means to him. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. How's it going everyone? My name is Tyler Riso. I'm a competitive rollerblader and I've lived in the Monterey Bay area for my whole life. The Monterey Skate Park has been my local skate park ever since I lived here, growing up, and it's, it's been crucial to my life. If I didn't have the Monterey Skate Park growing up, I still would have skated. I just would have skated in the streets. And so having that park gave me the ability to safely practice the sport that I wanted to do. And so I think that especially for the kids that live out over here on this side of the Monterey Bay, having a local skate park is crucial to being able to safely practice the thing that they care about and love because they're going to do it no matter what. Action sports is a growing, thriving community and it's not going away. So you have to embrace it and, and make room for it to safely exist in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come, come forward closer to the podium.
Hi, my name is Mike Wax. I am not a skater, but I did break my arm at a skate park on a BMX bike. And everything is like so beautiful that the kids have said and the adults speaking to the grit quotient, I definitely wouldn't be a five-year-old speaking at a meeting that's like a lot of bravery. So it just instills a lot of confidence and that's beautiful. But besides grit, it's so I didn't really skate too much, but like skating a bowl is like a very peaceful, meditative thing. And like for a kid with lots of dings and notifications and work, it's just a way to clear your headspace. And for adults too, it's a beautiful thing. Where I grew up, the kids spearheaded the effort to make the skate park and it really enlivened or it made that part of the city so vital and has been enjoyed by thousands of people for twenty-five years because I'm pretty old. And it's just an amazing thing to have for the community members. So that's all. Oh, and it's also inclusive, not just for roller skates and skateboards, but also economically. You could obviously just buy a board and whether you're rich or middle class, whatever, you all go and it's an equal playing field. So it's great. Thanks.
Welcome.
Hi there, Stephanie Driscoll, Monterey native. Kids are here in Pacific Grove. Or I guess I should say, I grew up in Monterey, but I've been living in PG for a long time. But I just wanted to bring the perspective as a teacher. Skateboarding is a growing sport and like everyone has mentioned, there needs to be a safe place to practice. I teach at Chartwell over in Seaside and I know that they have an active skate club going on. And I just see this as the opportunity for PG High School to have some type of skate clubs, skate group that can meet after school and have a safe place to practice. So I just wanted to bring that perspective as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Evening. My name is Kelly Sorensen. Been up here every meeting we've had so far. But I've seen this community grow for the last thirty-six years as far as I'm the owner of On the Beat Surf Shop. And every kid for the last thirty-six years had to deal with streets safety. Monterey Park, I was there on that team. They built it incorrectly and so Seaside, same thing, kinda, and even Marina. So you guys have it in your hands to bring up with a great skate park and get the community behind it as you see they are. So I'm just here to support and ready to rock it when you guys are.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
My name's Eloise Shim and I'm a Peninsula resident and my son, who's forty-five, he did break his ankle ten years ago on the Monterey Skate Park, but he, he survived. But so if there's any more talk of Monterey or a skate park, I wasn't going to talk about that. Actually, what I wanted to talk about is the, the ordinance that you passed about sort of voting down about the home key at the last meeting. And the governor of California passed many ordinances and bills and state mandates requiring that all cities in California to contribute to the eradication of homelessness. As I understand it, cities that put roadblocks to that end will be given economic consequences such as blocked state and federal funding, which will impact PG negatively. The main argument against the, the home key funding, which is fifteen million dollars, is that there will be fifty-five years of PG having to financially support it after it's been established. But eventually PG will have to do something in good faith as a community that wants to end homelessness or at least lessen the disastrous impacts that homelessness brings. Recently, in Los Angeles, the city passed an ordinance to ban homeless encampments and shelters within five hundred feet of schools and childcare centers, essentially criminalizing homelessness. Which is alarming and disheartening. We're here on the peninsula, there are cannabis dispensaries that are closer than five hundred feet to childcare centers and schools. So that's just my comment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just here to support the future skate park for Pacific Grove. I've been a resident here for twenty-six years. I raised two boys. One was a rollerblader. He skated with Team Adventures who did demos here, Good Old Days, other competitions throughout Northern and Central California. My other one was a skateboarder, sponsored skateboarder. Also, we had a halfpipe in our backyard since we didn't have a skate park in PG. All the kids would come there and it was great having kids coming to your house after school. Like others, people said, we have basketball courts, we have tennis courts, we have swimming pools, we have golf courses, we have soccer. like others, people said, we have basketball courts, we have tennis courts, we have swimming pools, we have golf courses, we have soccer fields. Some kids aren't into that. They're into skating. So I think our kids shouldn't have to go to Monterey, Marina, Salinas, Santa Cruz. They should have their own park that they're happy with and they're proud of and they have a good place to go and enjoy themselves. So I hope you seriously consider putting a skate park in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Council. Thanks for letting us speak today. Um, my name is Kirk Conrad. I'm a PG resident and business owner here in, uh, Pacific Grove. And I'm here to support the skate park project. I, all these little legends that spoke today, just absolutely amazing stories. I don't need to add to that, but um, our community desperately needs something like this. Um, and as a resident, I support it. As a business owner, I support it. And, uh, yes, it's for the children, but I, I guarantee you I will be out there too. So it's for the adults, um, as well. So, um, 100% behind this. Um, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, my name is Socor. I'm a mom and, um, I too will be out there at the park. I've never, I've never skated, but I grew up in Carmel Valley and, um, just riding my bike or skateboarding on a dirt road. So I can't imagine how nice it would be for my daughters to learn on a brand new amazing park. Um, so thank you for the opportunity and for considering and for hearing us all out.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Rodney Rodriguez and I wanted to, uh, thank you guys for the skateboard project and, uh, I grew up here and wanted a skate park for over 50 years. I've worked with the city in the past with the Parks and Rec on some previous skate park projects that, uh, didn't come out to, uh, build anything, but we've tried in the past and I'm really happy you guys are putting this together. Could we see a show of hands of who's in favor for the skate park tonight?
Okay.
You guys can raise your hands too.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is, is an audience participation.
Well, we all thank you and, um, good night.
Thank you. Bye. Welcome.
Um, how's it going? I'm Amy and, um, I'm a nanny here in town and there's only so many places that I can, I remember taking about three boys in my car and loading up the boards and pads and everything. And that's a lot of stuff to load up. So I would, now I want something here where I can, in fact, I had a little boy yesterday that wanted a toe behind my bike and I thought, hmm, I don't think we can do that. Mom wouldn't be very happy. I know you, I know some of you guys have done that, but I don't want to get in trouble with mom and dad. So I would think that to have that in our community would be very, well, it'd be great for me because then I could go along with you, meet other moms and dads, uh, other children. I know Logan Landry, I don't know if he remembers me, but Miss Jenny used to take care of you. And I think you want a skate park. I think a lot of you guys do and I, it just would be something so good with all the stuff that's going on now. We need some smiles. We need, you know, we want you parents also to be able to have somewhere where your kids can go and feel safe. I think as long as it's safe. And if there's other parents there with the younger children, I also think the older adults that are gonna skate there with the kids, you also have to be a very good example. It can't be somewhere where it's gonna be unsafe. A good example just to lead our community into something that could go forward, somewhere where I can ta- take the kids, somewhere, you know, because I'm, I can only take the kids to so many places. So I'm, I'm in favor of it and I thank you for listening to all of us and letting us be up here and speak to you guys and taking the time to allow for all of us. You know, the younger generation, older generation. This is something that's touches close to my heart. I have, I have a new family right now. They're twin boy and girls. And they're young. They're 10 and I need some more stuff to do with them. So and they're a little wild and they need to get their energy out. So thanks, guys. It's been a really great night and, uh, stoked if something happens.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Council. How we doing? Uh, my name is Tyler Ellis. I appreciate you guys, uh, holding us tonight and, um, been a resident now for five years and have the other owner of Captain Stoker. So, um, appreciate you guys coming by, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to say that skate parks in the community does like obviously mean a lot to us and coming from a family that uh, wasn't much of one, it was an outlet for me and a place to, to go and meet my new family. And obviously we don't even have a skate park yet and we've created a small family here already, you know, so it's been, it's been nice and it's been exciting, you know, thinking about what we can, uh, what we can make happen here in PG. And, you know, just like what Kelly said, you know, when you guys are ready, we're ready and we can make it happen. So it's a good teaching moment and for all these kids and the bravery that has already been shown here tonight. So we really do thank you guys for listening and hope we can make something happen here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, rest of the community. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, my name is John Hasselbauer. I'm a member here. I'm, uh, very fortunate because I'm in the, uh, in the Navy for 16 years and I've moved 10 times and, uh, been lucky enough to live here twice. And, uh, we know this is where we wanna sow our roots in four years when I retire from the Navy. Um, and I'd really like to see the community invest in the youth with the skate park because it's really important to our community and just the community in general. So thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else?
Yeah, welcome. My name's Andrew. I moved here last year. My family has lived here in Pebble Beach area for a long time. My grandparents lived here since the seventies and, uh, a lot of different in, uh, iterations of this have, you know, come and gone, uh, indoor skate park, other things I've heard about. So, um, and I've myself have been to everyone in the county and seen all of the different iterations of that. And I would just like to advocate for the actual design of it, given that y'all are in agreeance, which hopefully you will, you will be, but, um, I've been to especially seaside. It's kind of like a shoebox shape and it's like you can only kind of go one direction or the other. And then there's a few other obstacles, you know, and things you can do. So I just am a big fan of like the flow of it and kind of thinking about the actual design and making sure that's like, you're well thought out as, uh, the owner of On the Beach said, and just making that a priority as well for people of all skill levels. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jordan Murdock. Um, I've been riding BMX in Monterey County for the past 25 years. I've been to every skate park, Monterey County, Santa Cruz County, Santa Clara County, travel all over the state. Um, as soon as I heard that Pacific Grove is considering a skate park, I can't stress to you guys how much of an awesome decision you guys will be making. People will travel to come to your park. I do it frequently. Every Friday I drive clear to Sunnyvale to ride my bike because I get off of work at five. They have lights. I know I could ride till 10. It'll happen. You guys would be surprised. The people that'll travel near and far just to come to your skate park. Monterey County is in a desperate need of a good skate park. There's literally nothing up to date, smooth concrete south of Watsonville. That's the new escape park. So I'd strongly encourage it. I think you guys have more than enough support. Um, and I think you'd be shocked with, uh, the turnout, as you guys would see. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council for, for the time. Uh, my name's Nick Stong. I've been a PG local for a little over four years. Uh, I work at the Monterey Bay Aquarium with a, I have a three-year-old daughter and a six-year-old son. And I don't think kids scrape their knees enough anymore. Uh, we all have memories of going out in the neighborhood with a skateboard or a bike and and playing at the local cul-de-sac and this day and age, it's just a little tougher to do. And depending on where you live, it's, it's, you know, may or may not be safe with traffic. Uh, my three-year-old daughter is, is actually the one who's most taken to being on a skateboard lately and it's hard. I live on a relatively quiet street, but there's still, you know, I can't leave her, um, for more than 30 seconds without worrying if a car is gonna come zooming around the corner. So having a place where um, they could recreate safely, set down screens, set down tablets, you know, experience being outside, meeting other kids, um, uh, huge proponent, obviously not the only one. So again, thanks for your time and, uh, go skate park.
All right. It looks like, uh, well, I hadn't asked about our virtual audience.
We do have one online.
Have any public comments? Please.
We do have one caller, Living Truce, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. I don't understand how this works. I wanted to be there tonight, but I had an, um, old person injury that prevented me from coming all the way from Monterey to Pacific Grove. Um, I'm the person that you don't want to hear from. I'm that 52-year-old Gen Xer that grew up in Pacific Grove riding my skateboard. And I was also on the skate committee for creating a skate park in about 2006, I guess, with Mr. Rodney Rodriguez, who spoke earlier. You know what? Hello PG, I love y'all. I love you so much. But you're dusty. All right, you're dusty. Get over yourselves. Put a skate park in. It's been too long. You need to move forward into the 21st century here. All right. Get over it and make it happen for everybody who actually lives there. The people that pay rent and pay their mortgages and put their kids in school there. There's nothing to do there. And if you're afraid about, you know, the skate parks bringing some kind of bad element there, guess what? The bad element was there before when there wasn't a skate park. So give them somewhere to go. Give them something to do. There's, I'm trying so hard to not use bad words. There's nothing to do there. That's why we all got in trouble all the time. And we did. I got in so much trouble for riding my skateboard down the street from my house on Marino Pines to Lover's Point before there was a wreck trail just because I had nothing to do. And then I got in trouble. They're not gonna get in trouble. They're gonna do good things. They're gonna ride their skateboards. So PG, love ya. This is Misty right here. This is Misty Sherman speaking to you, loving you and telling you just bad word, get over it and make the skate park happen. Thank you. Come to.
Thank you.
Angela Lawrence, enjoy mayor.
Welcome.
I love it. Boy, have you had a lot of public participation. Uh, Mayor and Council, I think you already voted a huge chunk of money to go aside to start the development of this. However, it's gonna take an absolutely double chunk to get it a reality that the city doesn't have. So all this wonderful enthusiasm is gonna have to virtually be made a reality with donations and fundraising. And I hope that everyone who spoke tonight is ready to chip in to make that reality happen. Because the city doesn't have all that money. It's already allocated a huge put aside a huge chunk of ARPA funds for this. And yes, it's needed and wanted. But the reality of the real world is it's got to be paid for. And it's time to save your pennies in your piggy bank and your parents to start fundraising so that this can become a reality for you because government can't take care of you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No other callers online.
All right, I'm gonna close public comment. And, uh, before we, uh, move on, I hope you understand, we do have other things on the agenda tonight to talk about. And really greatly, I think I'm speaking for all my colleagues here that we all greatly appreciate you coming out and being here in person and speaking, um, in your own voice. So thank you. And we're not offended if you decide not to stay to the end of this meeting. All right. Um, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Uh, any council members have anything to pull from the consent agenda? Councilmember Coletti?
Let's take a five-minute break for them to clear.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, friend. Seven eleven like slurpee.
No.
It was cute.
No.
The chief would hand it out now.
The room got hot.
Yeah, it's very warm. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Good night, Milo.
Yeah, okay.
Bye, buddy.
All right, all right, let's, um, let's move on. Any council member wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda? Councilmember McAdams?
I don't want to pull an item, but I just wanted to commend, um, the accounting department for the, uh, very informative and consistent, uh, reporting that they have been providing for us in consent agenda. And I'm happy to move for approval.
Uh, okay, we have to ask the public, uh, also if they wishing to pull an, a consent agenda item. Anyone here? Virtual audience?
Uh, nobody online, sir.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. And a vote, please.
What's that? Mayor Protem, who seconded that?
I seconded.
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti? Paduri? Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I'll just quickly summarize what we just did. We approved, uh, council minutes from August 3rd. We've, uh, uh, approved a resolution adopting a, a revocable, a revocable gift from the Laws family for the library. Um, we have adopted a resolution entitled the resolution of the city of Pacific, uh, Pacific Grove, California, affirming support of reproductive freedom. We've received, uh, reports on the check register from July, core revenue status also from July. A report on new local emergency actions. We've authorized a time extension uh, for contracts, uh, for George Washington Park Management and the Lover's Point Peer Assessment. And we've received minutes from the Architectural Review Board from July, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. Also minutes from July. Museum Board minutes from February. Planning Commission minutes from June and Traffic Safety Commission meeting minutes also from June. And so that brings us to Agenda Item 11A, Memorandum of Understanding uh, between the city of Pacific Grove and the Police Officers Association. Ms. Livia, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and members of the public. Must be smelly or something. Everybody left the room. Um, all right. Um, first of all, I just want to announce that Donna Williamson, our chief negotiator, uh, for, uh, the negotiation process is on the phone. So after my presentation, if there's any questions, she's available for those questions. Okay, um, the city and the Police Officer Association have been negotiating a successor to the Memorandum of Understanding that expired June 30th of this year. Um, the negotiations were conducted in good Um, the negotiations were conducted in good faith, fully collaborative, and based on mutual benefits to the association and the city. During the negotiations, city negotiators met with city council in closed session on various dates and proceeded with the bargaining sessions with the city council authority. A tentative agreement was reached in early August with the POA and they authorized this agreement on August the ninth. So tonight, staff is asking city council to approve the agreement. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, there we go. Oh. There we go. Okay, thank you. The MOU attached to the agenda report outlines all the changes made during the negotiations. The changes include economic and MOU language clarity changes. Some key changes made include a multi-year contract that ends in June of two thousand and twenty-four, reconciliation of holidays with other employee groups. So Christmas Eve Day was added as a paid holiday for POA, salary increase in year one and two of the contract, a three percent increase is provided in twenty-two, and this is in line with a three percent COLA provided to other employees recently, and a two percent increase in two thousand and twenty-three. Enhances were made to specialty pays, including the addition of bilingual pay, an increase to education for a total of six and a half percent from five percent, and an increase to post-pay for advanced certification went from two and a half percent to three percent. The next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so this slide is a summary of the fiscal impact. Um, in year one, a hundred and three thousand dollars is budgeted for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three for the COLA. The projected impact of the additional pays is estimated to be approximately forty-seven thousand dollars. However, this is an estimate. This really will depend on how many police officers are eligible for the bilingual pay. In year two, seventy thousand dollars will be budgeted for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and for the two percent COLA along with the continued education, I'm sorry, a continued additional pays. Total projected ongoing cost for the multi-year agreement is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay, next slide, thank you. Okay, in closing, I'd like to thank the POA's bargaining team for their collaborative efforts to get an agreement. And I would also like to thank Donna Williamson and the city's negotiating team for their efforts as well. This concludes my report, and now I'll turn it over for comments and discussion.
Anyone wishing to have a comment on this item, please come forward. I'm not seeing anyone here, any virtual comment.
We do have one caller. POA President?
Welcome.
Hello, uh, Mayor and City Councilmember. This is Wiley Griffin, the Pacific Grove Police Department POA's president. I just want to say, uh, I appreciate the hard work on both ends that was put into it to come to this resolution. And uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No other callers.
All right, council discussion on this item. Councilmember Smith?
Uh, Your Honor, the move the recommended action. Second.
Discussion on the motion. I'll just make a comment and I'll probably ask Ms. uh, Livia to affirm. Um, this is uh, uh, good faith, as she said, good faith, faith bargaining with our police officers. And this is um, to adequately pay the going rate for compensation for police officers um, for an excellent police force and also have the the funding resources to pay for uh, new police officers as the openings arise. Councilmember McAdams?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to commend and thank our police department for their hard work, uh, especially during the pandemic. And recently, we've had some pretty unique and interesting situations. Uh, so thank you for keeping our community safe.
Councilmember Claddy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the lone dissenting vote here, I'm sure, but that's okay. Uh, once again, we're here contemplating using one-time ARPA funding to justify ongoing uh, salary increases in the light of the fact that their CalPERS is showing um, their investment on their, the rate of return on their investment is is underwater to the tune of six point one percent in the last fiscal year. And and there is absolutely no analysis for the long-term uh, financial liability to the city for our unfunded pension liability based on the salary increases. So I won't be able to support. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I absolutely support this. Thank you to the team who put this together, all the um updates and to the Police Officer Association for uh, the good faith bargaining. Thank you for the Police Officer Association for the one-year MOU period as well. And um, I'm happy we're going to get into a two-year contract. Lots of great additions, um, lots of great compromise on both sides. And I'm, I'm really happy with this um, this contract and the service that we've been provided. And I know that we'll, we'll be able to depend on going forward. Thank you.
Right, I'm, I'm going to ask a repeat of the motion.
I, I'm just going as recommended.
As recommended.
Attorney's.
For, for the errata, okay. And, and you seconded that?
Seconded.
Okay, um, so now I'll turn to our city attorney. I'm sorry, am I on the wrong one? I'm on the wrong one.
Oh, it's a question.
My apologies, I'm getting ahead of ourselves. That's the next agenda item.
I'm a lawyer, so.
Okay, I may have a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson?
Aye.
Pedri?
Aye.
McAdams?
Thank you for your service. Aye.
Coletti?
No.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries six one.
All right, now we're moving on to Item eleven B, amend the City of Pacific Grove's conflict of interest code. Ms. Candell?
Good evening, Mayor Peak, members of the council and members of the public. As Mayor Peak alluded just a tad ago, a minute ago, the um recommended action was changed, and so that's in front of you via errata. Um, the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four requires local governments adopt and maintain a conflict of interest code, uh, Government Code eighty-seven three hundred. It designates all positions that make our make or participate in the making of governmental decisions and assigns specific disclosure categories to each position. Additionally, the act requires every agency review its code on a annual basis to ensure the code reflects the organization's current staffing and submit an amended code if necessary. It was last amended in two thousand and twenty, and my review of the code has since revealed some revisions as also, as, as well as um some additions and deletions um, that were not previously listed. Um, City Clerk, DEI Coordinator, Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director slash Deputy City Manager, and of course, the deletion of the Community and Economic Development Director. Staff request council approve the uh, recommended action as uh, listed on your errata today, and this concludes staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No online callers.
All right, council discussion on the item?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Well, hold, hold on.
With the reading, with the reading.
Yeah, you need to request that I um, uh, read the title of the ordinance before you move the recommended action. So does somebody ask me to do this?
I'll ask you to do it. I have to.
Right now, we get our.
And so the City of Pacific Grove to amend and codify the city's conflict of interest code.
I second that.
So now the, the next step would be a motion to approve the recommended action.
So moved.
Now I'll second that.
Now a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio? Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
Pedri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now on to uh, Item thirteen A, Focus General Plan Update. Welcome, Ms. Wyatt.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for having me here tonight to discuss this item. So Carrie, I think you'll put up the PowerPoint. Thank you so much. So tonight, we, we're discussing a little more in-depth as we look at the housing element update that we're in the process of. We're also looking at a focused general plan update. Our original general plan is from nineteen ninety-four. And due to the sizable numbers of units that the city needs to plan for for this cycle of the housing element for the next eight years, which is one thousand one hundred and twenty-five units, we are really considering a focused general plan update to go along with the housing element update. Next slide. Tonight, the city council action that we are requesting is to receive the report on actions to repair a focus general plan update, direct staff to initiate a focus general plan update to the land use, safety and transportation elements of the city's general plan, and authorize staff to issue a request for proposals. Next slide. So as I said, the housing element uh, is in process, and currently we have a request for proposals for the environmental review or SEQA to complete the housing element update. This is a required addition in to the housing element update. This proposal is already out. We have received two bids on it, and we are going to fund this through the city's uh, LEAP Local Early Action Planning Grant from the state. Next slide. The housing, like the housing element update occurs every eight years. This is, we have a very large increase, fourteen percent increase that we're looking at um, to the city's existing housing stock. And this is really requiring us to consider where are we going to put these units and increasing density, which is going to lead to us really looking at our zoning code, our land use element. And there are many new state laws since nineteen ninety-four that need to be reflected in our general plan that will be part of this update. In addition, the focused, there will be an EIR, an Environmental Impact Report required by SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, that will be um, included in this RFP and in the proposal. Next slide. Also, part of this request for proposal and part of your decision-making in this request for proposal is we are trying to combine as many efforts and to give you a broad overview of what is there, this is a big undertaking for the city since we haven't undergone a general plan update since nineteen ninety-four. Uh, we also want to consider other included required actions that the state is requiring for housing elements to really be updated. And part of that is objective design and development standards and uh, also looking at our zoning code and an update to the zoning ordinance. And in addition, this would require us to do a local coastal plan amendment. So those are all going to be included in this request for proposal to ensure we're covering the major items that need to be covered in the RFP. So rather than piecemealing everything, I wanted to ensure you see the big picture here that we included in this housing element update, and we really look towards the general plan. So this is, I know a lot to think about, but I wanted to make sure we brought it all to you at once to review. And these are the priorities. I don't think that we can take anything out of it. We went, we decided let's bring a focus general plan update as the first step, a full a full update to the general plan and all the elements in the general plan could be very costly. And we are, the focus general plan is really what we need to work on, the objective design standards and the zoning update. Options is the next slide. We, as staff, recommend that we move forward with this RFP with the included elements that I have brought to you tonight. You could determine to choose only one element or all three, or uh, provide staff with alternative direction. So that is the end of my report. And I'm ready for questions or comments. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Please come forward. Any virtual public comment?
We do have uh, four callers online. Tony Chiani?
Welcome.
Good evening. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
I'm glad to see that staff is recognizing they need to expand the focus of the update to include transportation, land use, zoning, design development standards. And now we're talking about a lot more elements of the general plan than are listed. I think it's really important to make sure that the um, EIR that's being proposed is not bifurcated, that it's all inclusive and comprehensive. In other words, not just to do the housing element, but to do all the elements simultaneously, simultaneously. I'm very concerned that the city has taken so long to come to realizing they need to do an update of the general plan um, and are only doing it now because you're being pressured by the state to comply with the housing element. Please step back, look at this yeah, with a wide focus on all of the elements of the general plan. If you're doing an amendment to the local coastal program, it's going to also require you take a wide view of, of how this part or piece and other pieces fit into the bigger picture. I don't see that that's what's happening, but I do see that staff recognizes it is an issue. So um, I don't think this is going to take care of it. Uh, I think you're going to need to take care of it. You're going to need to either reach into your emergency funds or backup funds and fund an entire comprehensive update of the general plan as part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Chatwin?
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for uh, taking my, letting me speak. I would just say that the um, the general plan is long overdue, and, and, and I know the, the planning commission have been talking a lot about trying to get some changes. Uh, whatever the impetus for it, this is a smart idea to do. I'm concerned, I agree with Mr. Ciani, Tony Chiani's words, ninety-nine percent of them. I think the land use and safety are very big elements that have to be considered in detail. I'm a little concerned about the ODDS, the Objective Design and Development Standards. I, that came up again in two, in the past, in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, there was a, a, a trend to develop these things and have an ODDS there, but it, it, it's creating a, a cookie cutter kind of thing, kind of motif that the city wants to apply to a, a, a city that is anything but cookie cutter. So in short, I just want to wrap up and say that, go forward with this as much as you can, but I think it's too much of a, it don't, it's being overloaded. And overloading it, you're going to get a mediocre product if you get a good one at all. I think the land use, safety and, and ways to deal with RENA uh, without going into the deep water of ODDS is, are, are smarter ways to go. But, but scope it down a bit, because I think it's going to be too much to get a good product out of with one contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrew Kay?
Welcome.
Good, good evening. My name is uh, can you hear me now? Yes. Okay, my name is Andrew Cubica and uh, um, when I looked at this and saw what we were requesting, I was a little confused. It, it seemed like we were. It it seemed like we were asking the consultant to decide what's, what Pacific Grove would look like in the future without giving them guidance in the RFP. What I'm more familiar with is that you put a request for information, RFI, out and see who could do what your, and give them some ideas and then get ideas. And then based on the ideas of what you get from a consultant, then you put an RFP out. You know, I'm glad we're doing this. It's been a long time. I thought I had read somewhere that we're supposed to be doing this every ten years. So the fact that we haven't done it since nineteen ninety-four, it's about time to do it. But I'm a little concerned about what we're really asking a consultant to do. We've been billing ourselves as a city of the last hometown, and I don't know if they're going to take that into consideration when they come up with ideas of how to design Pacific Grove. So with that said, I'll look more at what this, what was in the procedure here, paperwork here, and I'll send you some emails. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Lilly?
Welcome.
Thank you. I guess I should say, can you hear me first? I came earlier this evening, but there were so many people in the audience and out in the lobby, I almost got knocked down, so I went home. And I couldn't get back there in time. So I guess there's not as many people now in the audience, but any rate, I'm speaking as a private citizen. First, I want to commend the staff for bringing this issue forward. The issues are all there in your report, and they are all well described. That includes a request to plan for eleven hundred and twenty-five new residences from twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. And I think we all know the penalties for not doing so, which are also detailed in the first part of the handout. We have some hard choices, I think, to make here. This simply means that we must concurrently plan housing with land use, transportation, and the safety elements of our general plan. And that means we do them all together so that one doesn't predate or improperly influence the other. They need to all be done together. And if we don't do that, then I I don't know how the planning commission or the city council for that matter can reasonably be expected to vote to support any housing policy changes because they would be developed in a vacuum without understanding the, as I said, the impact on transportation, land use, and public safety. It's been said our plan is several years out of date. The cost to revise that plan are now potentially quite high and probably beyond the current budget that is in the, described in the handout. But delaying this to subsequent years doesn't do it either. That's kicking the can down the road, and so I encourage you to adopt the resolution that the staff to to do this so that we can not further delay planning for both housing, land use, safety and traffic so that we can maintain the city as the last hometown. And thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. I share a lot of concerns about what we're actually going to end up with, but well, I mean, with the consultant even, but we certainly have to move forward. It's a necessity. I have a question on one of those PowerPoint slides. It said, city required to rezone either within one year of three years. What in the world does that mean? I'm sorry. That's somehow is not a complete sentence to me and does not express what was trying to be said. So that's my question, and I I hope that we can come up with something comprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other callers online?
All right. Council discussion. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Ms. Wyatt, I had a couple of questions. I thank you for putting this together. I I guess my question is, what's the opposite of a focused update? An comprehensive?
Councilmember Tomlinson, yes, it would be a comprehensive. It would be all of the elements of the general plan.
Okay, so in this proposal, it's three elements, the land use, transportation, and safety. But then you further explained just things about the land use. What's the transportation and safety pieces that will be required to be updated?
The transportation or circulation element is part of our required general plan. There have been a lot of state laws that have required updates to the safety and transportation or the transportation and circulation element. So that would be one element that we would want to focus on in this update. And also, the safety is another key element that has had more state law updates. So those are the two that we recommend that we focus on in this update. So those, those are the two we are really pushing to make sure we are compliant with new state law. In the RFP, this goes, we go into some depth about why these are about all the additional state laws that have influenced these two elements of the general plan update.
Okay, I I'm sure there's a lot to choose from. I'm just trying to wrap my head around why those three and whether or not safety and transportation, other than the fact that they've had a lot of laws that changed in thirty years. I'm sure a lot of these areas have had a lot of laws change in that amount of time. Do do the, do we feel that the safety and transportation law changes will impact our ability to therefore meet the final goal of the housing in increasing the housing and meeting the RENA numbers?
Yes, I think those are key elements that we need to focus on to ensure we have, we're meeting state law, we're really comprehensively looking at, like, for example, fire zones. So we have some fire zones around the DeMonte Forest that we want to focus on and ensure that we're, we're thinking about that in our future development. So those are transportation. If we're looking at increased density with housing, we want to make sure that we have good transportation. Some of the new state laws are requiring zero parking. So those are things that we really want to think about with our circulation and transportation element.
Okay, thank you. And then I I have the same question as Ms. Doimer who called about the one to three, one year of three years. What would be the, what are you trying to relay there?
Sure, and we have gone into more depth about this in our March seventeenth city council meeting, and if we go back to that document, it kind of explains that in more depth. But this is really the state, once we complete our housing element, which is our goal, going to stick to that goal to have a compliant housing element by December twenty twenty-three. That is the biggest focus. If we have a compliant housing element, the state will require the rezoning within one year. Or and if we, or within three years, they'll allow us three years to complete our rezoning effort, which could be a substantial effort, especially if we're looking at one thousand one hundred and twenty-five units. However, if we fail to have a compliant housing element, we will be required to complete that rezoning within one year, which will be substantial staff time, effort, consultant. So our goal is to really have a compliant housing element do this right and have that three-year timeframe to complete the rezoning. I know that there are concerns that people want us to complete the general plan update, the rezoning, everything in the same timeframe as the housing element update, and that is not a possibility, to be honest, from what I see. I've been looking around at other general plan updates in our in Monterey County. Salinas has been moving onward with a general plan update for over five years for different portions of their general plan. They started with their economic development update and then moved on to the general plan update. Marina just embarked on a general plan update. Seaside has been working on their general plan update. They've had some delays. It's been eight years. So this, I'm not, I think we can do it faster. But I want to have a realistic expectation that this is not going to be concurrent, and I know that that is a complaint I've heard that people want this to be concurrent, and I can tell you that that's with all the public participation and really hearing from the community, we will not be able to do that in the same timeframe. But the real goal here, let's update our housing element, have it submitted to the state by December twenty twenty-three. Get this RFP going and get our house, getting, get our focused general plan update moving. Okay, thanks. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Anastasia, thank you for the report. It's very thorough. I appreciate that. And since it hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-four, I would ask everybody what's happened, you know? What do you remember in nineteen ninety-four? It's been that twenty-six years, and it's time to move forward on this. We've talked about it many times, and I think this is time to move forward with this plan, and I'm I support the recommendation.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for me like an innovative alternative. But obviously, we're all aware that the entire general plan does need to be updated. And then the sort of like level of denial or just ignoring that fact is sneaking up on the city quickly. So I I am cautiously optimistic. I mean, I do think this is, this was a very creative way to get what we need done to to focus on the housing element and to make that goal. But I think if we look at the general plan, like deferred maintenance, the house like collapsed decades ago. And so has staff audited the general plan and do we know? Is it called out all of the updates that are needed? Are you just like the whole thing?
Let me jump in there if I could. Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, no, we've not done an audit of the general plan. We we do know, as you've pointed out, that it's woefully out of date, and and we have not spent the time because we feel basically the entire document is out of date.
Okay, I mean, would that be helpful to staff in the city to have something like that done?
I, I, Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, I don't think that would be the best use of time. First of all, we don't have somebody on staff that could do that. We would have to bring in somebody for that. And I think if we're going to expend effort and dollars in that area, I think we'd be better served by just getting the documents updated. That's my opinion.
Okay, okay. And so that was sort of my next question was what does staff need? I mean, obviously, the council needs to commit a large amount of money, but but and in addition to that, what does staff need? I mean, do we need a person dedicated to this update?
Councilmember McAdams, I think if if we were going to take on updating, and 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 if the question is what would be required to update the general plan, I think we'd be better served, but not by an in-house employee, but probably by a consulting group that really has expertise in this. The challenge is as as I think you're, you're probably aware, these people are highly in demand right now. And that that's our, that's the difficulty. So it it's dollars and finding somebody that that could do it. I'm not saying we shouldn't. But that's why we also went with this smaller effort because we thought, okay, we have a chance of getting these done. At least we're moving forward. And we think we can at least fund these. And then the other thing is realistically, even if we had, let's say we had a person and we had all the dollars, it's it's a significant effort and one that will go over multiple fiscal years. And so I think that's another consideration to look at it in this way, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. Thank you for that. And again, I I'm I'm trying to look at the general plan like deferred maintenance, right? And it just gets to a point where I, what do you do? And I, and we've been there. So, you know, I think something that I would suggest for staff to consider and the council is to include the general plan, and maybe it's sort of these bits of focused updates as a capital, as a CIP in the CIP process. And then that way, it sort of is staying on the radar. And I'm really am looking at it as a capital improvement project. It is for the whole entire city. So that would just, that was just sort of an idea, and I'm in support of the staff's recommendations, all three. Thank you.
Councilmember Cluddy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I first off, I'm going to give a little love to our nineteen ninety-four general plan. The reason it hasn't been updated, one of the reasons is it's a very good general plan. I've read it. But obviously, time marches on, and we need to get caught up. I do appreciate what Councilmember McAdams just mentioned about perhaps rolling into some CIP projects the updates of various general plan elements. For instance, a conservation element. That's a required element of the general plan. We don't have one. Open space element, we need to do that as well. So I I think we do need to keep moving forward on this. I I do have a question about the staff report. It mentions that we're going to have to do an initial study and mitigated negative deck. But I think, Anastasia, you mentioned we're going to go for a EIR instead. Is that correct?
Currently, for the housing element update, we're going to do a mitigated deck, but the general plan update, Councilmember Cluddy, would be a full EIR.
Okay, so we're talking about an EIR, a general plan update of at least three elements. LCP updates as required, developing implementing ordinances to our zoning code, development of objective design standards, and and I think we should, I think when I hear objective design standards, it's really just zoning standards, zoning development standards, but they're objective in nature, but there's nothing unique about them relative to our normal zoning code development standards. Isn't that true? I mean, a set, a setback, for instance, you could call that an objective design standard, or you could call it a zoning code development standard, right?
Councilmember Cluddy, that is part of it, but there, we do need to remove any subjective language in our current zoning code, which we have.
Yeah, understood. Okay, just wanted to clear, clear that up a bit. One thing I don't want to see happen with this is there's, in the agenda report, it's contemplated that we may put forth a ballot measure to either partially or fully rescind a voter initiative that was adopted back in nineteen eighty-six, Measure D, that would require a vote of the people to rezone either districts classified as U or O for open space. I wouldn't want to do a blanket repeal of Measure D. I I don't mind that the city can identify some parcels where properties could, you know, or housing could perhaps be cited. But I would want to see that as a focused ballot measure, not just a blank, a blanket repeal of Measure D. I guess you mentioned it's going to be impossible to coordinate the two efforts, the housing element and this general plan update. And I appreciate that. I understand that. But how much, it's difficult to have housing policy, develop housing policy with the out understanding how it's actually going to be implemented. So how quickly do you think we could have an initial framework or initial plan come back from whatever vendor we we choose? So I know it's going to be sometime in twenty twenty-three, but what what would you think? Is that going to be available maybe in June? So maybe, you know, nine months from now?
Councilmember Cluddy, I can look into that and and get back with you. I'd want to get more consultation on that.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Padori?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you bringing this to the table, Ms. Wyatt. I, first of all, I wanted to comment on what Councilmember Tomlinson was asking about the transportation and safety element. I I view this as like we're building more, we're building more houses, and therefore we're creating more density. And what we need to evaluate is what kind of traffic control patterns are changing here. In addition, the state has changed the metric for identifying how how folks are measured with respect to traffic. Previously, it was a metric called level of service. Now there is a metric called vehicle, vehicles, miles traveled. So every time you're building something, they measure how many miles does it take to actually reach your destination. So I think these elements are interrelated. And I think safety and traffic evaluations, et cetera, are going to be part of this package. So so I'm glad that that's in there because that will help us with our sustainability challenges too. The the question I had is somewhat Um, the uh the question I had is somewhat writing to with respect to what councilmember Coletti mentioned. Uh, the, this is a, this seems to be a lengthy exercise from what I can see. The RFP, uh, somebody actually being selected for the RFP and then somebody completing that effort. Uh, so so in in and I've seen that uh other cities have done these focused general plan updates. Uh, so I think I'll be interested to hear or see where we land with respect to the timeframe. Uh, and and I and when I in reading the RFP template, uh, I saw the evaluation criteria related to cost and other factors. Perhaps a a factor could be how long will they take to complete this? Uh, maybe that could be a a good addition to that criteria, uh, if it helps. Uh, and and the other uh item that uh, I mean, I I know that general plan updates are costly. Uh, but I don't know what a focus plan update in general, what the price range or cost uh, needs to be. Is is that uh a city-based thing? Or is it just because we're twenty five plus years old, therefore cost is high? Uh, I I would like to understand what kind of range are we looking at? Is it half a million? Is it a million or more? Um, because uh I think we'll need to make a decision if it's like really high, whether we we need to entertain it in this budget call around or the next. So hopefully that helps. But thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Wyatt. Appreciate it. I like the fact that uh you are looking at the big picture. I think that's absolutely um the context that we need to understand. Um, uh, going going forward and thank you for that information you provided to me before um the meeting. So with a a little bit of um um latitude from my colleagues, I'm gonna go back and ask some questions to to test my understanding of what's um before us tonight. So um, uh, Baird and Driscoll, their contract uh runs out at the end of this calendar year. And but they're gonna have responsibility for the housing element. And that's my understanding is without any unforeseen circumstances, we'll probably get them to have another another contract to extend their work into the next into twenty twenty three. To finish the housing element, is that fair statement?
Uh, Mayor, I did look at their contract today and amendment number one. And amendment number one does go until December twenty twenty three.
All right, I missed that. Thank you very much. What's the date for that? Do you have the date handy?
It it just said December twenty twenty three in the amendment.
No, when when that amendment was done.
I believe it was twenty twenty one, but I will.
Okay, I'll look for it. Thank, thank you. All right, I'm I missed that. But they are going to have responsibility for the housing element. That's that's their goal. Is that that right?
Mayor, yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, and the the housing um, and then I have a question about implementation, planning versus implementation. And my understanding is that the housing strategies that we talked about as part of the welcome home affordable housing, we're not, at this point, we're not implementing things, right? We're not doing zoning, we're not um, you know, we're not doing ordinances, um, right? We're doing the plans, the general plan update and the housing element. So all the things about ordinances for subdividing um uh small lots ordinance or we talked about rezoning um, uh, O and U, none of that's gonna happen until after the certification by HCD. Is that correct?
If I could jump in, Mayor, I I would say that that no. Um, one thing that I think I heard at the last council meeting or maybe two council meetings ago is council wanted us to go back to the welcome home strategies and see what could be implemented sooner than later is is what my discussion recently with with Ms. Wyatt. And so if there are things that we could bring forward that have already been proposed, I think that we that we haven't yet brought forward to you, we we probably should.
Well, I that that's what I'm trying to understand, you know, recognizing oh, we have just so much resources, people, money. Um, so I that would be helpful to have that conversation.
We think that's our direction from this council. That's what I heard at the the meeting where the where the project home key was discussed. What I heard the council say was we don't want to do this, but we want you to go back to the strategies identified and see what you can bring forward for us to consider. That's what I heard.
Yeah, and I that's what that's was my understanding. I'm I'm seeing seeing people shake their heads. But then we didn't, we didn't know about, hey, look, we we're gonna do all what's before us today. Do we have the bandwidth um to take on these other things? That's a that's a future conversation.
Sorry, Mayor, if I could jump in. Yes, you you're right. We're constrained in in resources. We're looking currently to do recruitment to possibly bring on another in-house planner with housing background to help with the housing effort. So somebody that can serve kind of in both roles.
Okay, okay.
So that's gonna be launched, I think, fairly soon. Yes, so that's something we we recognize we've been needing.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Um, so I'm a little confused um about the the April fifteenth RFP for environmental review, conduct environmental review. But there's conduct environmental review in this uh proposed RFP in our packet. So we must be doing reviews of different topics. Is that right?
Mayor, yes, we we are required to do a sequo analysis for the housing element update. So that that is the RP that we went out for in April and that will come back for award as we have received two bids for that. We need that sequo analysis to be conducted with our housing element update all completed by December twenty twenty three. So we can submit that to the state and this RFP that is before you is for the general focus, general plan update and sequo analysis that is required for that update.
Okay, and um uh just to state the obvious, environmental review and sequo, those are the same things.
Correct, Mayor.
I mean, for work purposes, thank you. Um, so uh uh objective design and development standards was brought up already in the conversation. So um I was thinking that was uh implementation thing. And and so I'm a little, so I'm wondering if that's part of the conversation. Mr. Harvey, we just had about what are some of the going forward, the affordable home strategies? This, this is one of those.
I I, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Okay, and um turning to um money. So my understanding is that there's a hundred thousand dollars in the general plan, that you have that in your your budget from for the housing element associated work. And then the the reap and leap funds this year's total a hundred and thirty thousand. And that's in addition, so we have a total of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year total for all this this effort.
Mayor, reap has been, we have utilized all of reap already. So it was initially a sixty five thousand dollar budget that has been utilized towards the housing element update so far. And now I am looking at the leap budget to fund some of the housing element update and the sequo analysis for the housing element update.
Uh, that doesn't sound entirely encouraging. So we still got the hundred thousand in the budget? You haven't touched that. And so reap funds are gone, leap funds. You're figuring out how much of that, the fraction of that is left over. So we've got a hundred thousand plus change. Okay, plus whatever grant money falls from the sky or Sacramento, I suppose. That would be nice, huh? Yeah, good. Thank you. That's a, that's a daunting uh constraint. And um, okay, I'm, so one other thing I'm confused about is so I I hear from council that um we definitely support the traffic safety and land use um, elements being updated as part of the housing element. That's a, it sounds like that's a minimum. And and there's concurrence on that. So it's the other general plan updates I'm I'm unsure about. In your um agenda report, under the title existing general plan audit, you you list eighteen items. Um, some of them are transportation and safety. Some of them don't, um, maybe some of them are not related to housing flood control. I guess I I'm just wondering of these eighteen items, are you thinking that we need to at least explore the possibility of having to update the general plan for these eighteen items? Or maybe some of them will just fall away. It's not important.
Your Honor, can you just for the for the group here tell eighteen items you're talking about?
I'm I'm this is, oh, it's in the RFP, page two oh four.
Page two oh four, existing general plan audit. There are eighteen components listed.
Uh, yeah, I know. I'm just wondering, is that um, is that absolutely work that you're thinking we need to do? Or we're we're still in the trying to figure it out whether that's critical or not?
This, sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in, this is in the proposed RFP. So we're asking whoever responds that this be part of the the work completed.
Okay, well, you know, recognize, thank you, uh, recognizing limited resources. Can we hold off on these eighteen items and just focus on the land use, safety and transportation elements?
Mayor, a lot of these laws and required updates will be included in those elements. So if I if I were to pick out each one, I would say this one is related to land use. This one is related to circulation. This one is related to safety. So so it will, it will be a part of the update of those elements.
Yeah, I I understand it, but there's some of them that I, climate change adaptation, twenty thirty greenhouse gas emissions target. I mean, there is, everything relates to housing. I understand that. I I'm I'm just concerned if there are some of these these eighteen items that we don't have to do right now. That's my point. If they don't have to, we don't have to do them right now, maybe we should just punt.
Mr. Mayor, I think, sorry, if I could jump in again, I think the concern is if these aren't done, then the work will not be complete, is my understanding. These are, these are essential as part of the requested update. If we carve them out, then we're not gonna get a complete.
And so HCD, HCD will go through when when we send off the new housing element to HCD. Then do they have like a checklist and they go through and they, wow, we wanna see updates on all these items? Before they'll certify?
These are more related to the other elements of the general plan that we are updating. So they will look to see that we have identified state laws that are applicable to those elements of the general plan and that we have updated accordingly. So we we want to make sure that in our request for proposal that we specify that these are key laws that we wanna be sure we're compliant with as a city.
So, okay, um, so if I understand you correctly, to get HCD certification or compliance, you used the word compliant earlier, that they're going to look at the entire general plan and they're gonna see is everything in the housing element mesh with everything in the general plan. Is that fair statement? I are are they the auditors for our general plan? That's what I'm getting at.
Well, only, Mr. Mayor, only a portion of the general plan. I think a lot of these are also state mandates that we need to comply with. And I think that's the other issue. We're not in compliance with them. But yeah, they're they're they don't have jurisdiction over the entire general plan.
Plan. And and so I I'll leave it with, that's my point. If if uh the goal to get HCD certification doesn't require some of these things, maybe that's, you know, phase two. That's my point, okay? Given the money, time constraints, and so for something to think about. Um, and last item, and thank you for letting me go on and on. Uh, do you have a proposed members of the um the housing element steering committee and the general plan technical advisory group members? I was just wondering, do you have a list of members from uh council and from the planning commission?
Mayor, it has been recommended that by our planning commission that we have for the RFP review. They would, they requested that we have two members of council and two members of the planning commission to review the request for proposal. It may not be, that may be something their attorney wants to look at if members of the city council who'll be voting on the approval of any uh bidder. If you would, if council, if that would be good for council to be on that review. So it may be something that just the planning commission is part of. So that's up to you to determine.
Well, let's have our city attorney weigh in on some words of wisdom. We have the the two committees and members of council potentially and planning commission on both committees, right? And um, I guess it matters if uh the committees have overlap in jurisdiction or the responsibilities and we have, you know, if we have only two. Yeah, how many are in the housing element committee, council members? One. Do we have any other council member on the housing element?
Mayor, we currently have three.
On the housing element?
Advisory Committee.
Housing Element Advisory Committee. And who is that?
Councilmember, Mayor is Councilmember Coletti, Councilmember McAdams and Councilmember Padori.
Okay, and and, okay, call it, that's good. And so um and this committee um is a temporary committee and it will extend through um housing element certification or possibly even beyond.
Mayor, I I would love to see it go beyond and continue to work on our housing element goals.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's three. And so how about the other committee? The general plan up uh, general plan, technical advisory group.
Mayor, we don't have one yet.
You don't have one? You don't? Okay.
So we would definitely wanna form one and we could look into that.
Okay, so if you have another council member and it's different than the three, then we just need to make sure that the responsibilities of the two groups don't overlap.
Mayor, I wanna um define this a little bit more. So we have a housing element advisory committee that doesn't really vote or on anything. It's just an advisory committee. And we discuss a lot of housing-related items and development and it's it's a nice group. And what I think you're, we're talking about here, two things. One is to have a committee to review this RFP and that is what planning commission requested that two members of the council, two members of the planning commission, review the RFP and make a decision on the best bidder when we receive those proposals in. The, you're also mentioning maybe having an advisory committee like we do for the housing element in general. And it's an advisory committee that follows the growth of the the housing element. And I think that's a great idea to have a technical advisory committee to move forward with the general plan update to help us focus and and work on the general plan update with these these elements. So to me, I think we have two things going on. One would just simply be a committee for the RFP and one is a committee like the housing element advisory committee to focus on the general plan update.
Okay, well, just just to be clear, I I didn't make up these names. They came from your agenda report. And I'm not suggesting any new committees, okay? It was just from your agenda report. Right, councilmember Tomlinson?
Uh, well, I was just gonna, on that, I was gonna recommend that it doesn't need to be two, that whoever, that at least the two people who are a part of picking the consultant that we're gonna work with should also be a part of the advisory committee. You know, it's kind of like you're picking who You know, it's kind of like you're picking who you're going to work with and you're going to be a part of doing it. So I would propose that it be the same um, committee if we're forming a committee. So just to add more confusion to that, and I'm ready to make a motion when you want it.
All right, Mayor Proten, Emilio.
Councilwoman Thompson, I'm going to make a motion right now. You, let me make a motion, I'll make a motion to direct the city staff to initiate a proposed general plan update to the land. Use, safety and transportation elements of the city's general plan to meet the minimum requirements or triggered. By the twenty twenty-three dash twenty thirty-one Housing Element Update and. Authorize the staff to issue a request for proposals for professional services. To prepare a focused general plan update, zoning code and maps. Update, objective design. And development standards and associated environmental review and documentation preparation.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
I'll second. I'm too slow twice.
Discussion on the motion, Councilmember.
One comment on the motion. It's it's not discussion.
Okay.
It's just a little comment, anything, there's a little, I like everything in this report except for one line that says local coastal program amendment. I'm going to say no to that. That's all, that's all, that's a poor attempt at humor. No, no, no coastal program amendment, please, thank you.
Okay, so my question is. I don't see that here. Yeah.
But it's in the agenda report. Bottom page one ninety-seven, we just indicated that is a possibility, that's all we were saying, we were not saying it's definitive, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification, I'll take it as a clarification, Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor, I, uh, the whole issue with pursuing the um. The strategies that were in the final report from the Welcome Home Initiative. Uh, it's true, uh, I made the motion. The motion was to pursue those strategies in lieu of pursuing a home key project. However, there wasn't any timeline attached to that. And some of those strategies do require. Uh, explicit knowledge about what we're going to be doing in the Housing Element Update. So I I saw that as. Some of those could be pursued immediately, but I think the bulk of them actually are going to have to require us to at least get a draft copy. Of the Housing Element Update, which I think we're expecting in March. So I'll just put that in there as a note, thank you.
May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Proten, Emilio? Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Padere?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you, uh, let's take short recess, uh, returning at eight twenty-five. All right, well, now reconvene our meeting. It's eight twenty-six and the next agenda item is item thirteen B, roadwork restrictions during harbor seal pupping season. Councilmember Coletti, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, I think I have some slides. Okay, thank you, Sandra. So we're uh, we're proposing an amendment to chapter fourteen oh four. Regarding roadwork constructions during the harbor seal pupping season. One of the first things I noticed in fourteen dot oh four is that there was no definition of what harbor seal pupping season actually is. So definition is supplied here. I'll read it, it says for purposes of this chapter. The harbor seal pupping season shall be generally defined. As occurring during the months of February through May. The city shall consult with local NOAA offices to make an exact determination of season status. And then once we've got a definition in place, we're now dealing with the implementation of the restriction. So this would go into chapter fourteen oh four. The section is entitled roadwork and other construction during the harbor seal pupping season. And the proposed ordinance reads as such, during the harbor seal pupping season, the city shall obtain concurrence from the local NOAA offices. Prior to the performance of non-emergency roadwork and other construction within the Ocean View Boulevard right away. Between Early and Carmel Avenues. The city shall report all emergency work to local NOAA offices as soon as possible. So I'll go once, maybe back, Sandra, I've just got a couple of follow-up comments on this particular one. So basically, I'm proposing to add a definition of pupping season. And to require NOAA concurrence prior to any non-emergency roadwork and other construction. Any emergency roadwork, which is assumed to take place outside of normal business hours. Uh, will have to be reported as soon as possible. This provides the necessary flexibilities for quote unquote acts of God. And last slide. And that photo taken by Kim Aikman, I uh. Expressing their gratitude for our pursuing this ordinance, thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Welcome.
My name is Nicole Reich and I'm a local community member. I'm here tonight to support the skate park. But as we all saw, the kids and members of our community have a voice to speak for themselves. The harbor seals do not have a voice. This past harbor seal pupping season, I had the unfortunate experience of hearing the terrible daily updates about the road noise and its effect on the pupping season. So, we are here tonight asking the city to consider adopting an ordinance that will protect the harbor seals from noise disturbances. The same noise disturbances that caused twenty-three miscarriages last pupping season. You know better and can do better, and I know you'll do the right by our treasured marine life. Just like when there's a shark in the water, you shut down the beaches to protect the community, shut down the roadwork and noise once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Debbie Beck, and thank you, Councilmember Coletti, for bringing this forward, and I urge you all to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
We have several hands online. Mr. Mayor, Tony Chiani.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the council, and thank you, Councilmember Coletti, for bringing this forward. Is the word "construction" as it's used in the ordinance defined? And the reason I raise that is, since a lot of this will be in the coastal zone, the local coastal program and Coastal Act use the word "development" to define activities that could be disturbing to the seals. And construction seems limited to me. Would shredding trees be construction? So, if someone's cutting down a tree next to the wreck trail or near it, or near the seals, and then shredding it, is that construction? I only raise that as an idea that maybe should be looked into. And then, my bigger concern is most of this work will probably be the city's work. In other words, the city will be the owner or the applicant for the work. The city development department will be the agency that, I guess, looks at the application and approves it or not and applies the special conditions. Who's the inspector? It's the city inspector? So, is there is there an issue of of who's going to be responsible for enforcement? If there is an issue, how will the city planning department handle that? Are they knowledgeable enough? Or should there be a provision in the ordinance that requires a specialist, an expert in marine biology, marine mammal habitat biology that would be required to be on-site during construction to catch things before or as they're happening, not after the fact? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Moreno.
Welcome.
Hello, and good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would also like to speak in favor of this ordinance, and I'm hoping you'll all vote for it. Permitting roadwork on Ocean Avenue next to the Harbor Seal Rookery during the peak of the pupping season. It was done without due diligence in regard to its environmental consequence. It was really a clear and prolonged eight-week violation of the Marine Mammal Protection Act. That act makes it illegal to disturb marine mammals while nursing, breeding, or sheltering. How many PG staff went to Hopkins Beach to hear the cries of dying harbor seal pups calling for their moms? The result of the relentless booming daily noise created by roadwork right next to the pups' supposed safe haven was absolutely horrible to watch. It took direct intervention from Monterey Bay Marine Sanctuary to get PG to obey the law. Then, just a few months ago, yet another project was recommended for approval by PG staff that would have allowed a homeowner to blast many tons of granite for a home remodel directly across from the Harbor Seal Rookery. Well, what this tells me is that the PG staff who are making these decisions and suggesting these exemptions, they simply do not have the information or training they need in order to assess potential harm to wildlife in our coastal ecosystem. PG staff should have maps showing areas of special biological significance. Staff should read and understand the Marine Mammal Protection Act and other coastal protections. At this moment, that is not happening. I would like to suggest that PG arrange classes for all potential PG decision-makers that clearly map out areas of concern. What those concerns are, and especially, who to call to get more information on any areas that they are not sure of. You have to do something, because really, there's no reason or excuse that these errors in judgment have to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I strongly urge you to direct the city attorney to draft the proposed ordinance to implement roadwork restrictions in the vicinity of the Harbor Seal Rookeries, which are the pupping beaches during the pupping season defined generally as February through May in the LCP. Harbor Seal Rookeries are specifically defined as ESHA, or environmentally sensitive habitat areas, in PG's local coastal program. But the LCP map is based on an outdated and erroneous earlier map. The city needs a crystal-clear ordinance enforceable at the earliest stages to prevent avoidable harm to our treasured and federally-protected harbor seal colony. The consequences of this year's roadwork were not just unfortunate, they were grave and entirely avoidable. At the March council meeting where the city's roadwork contract was approved and the already disruptive Cal-Am project was not brought into the discussion, the majority of the council relied on staff's understanding of the issues, despite the strong cautions of knowledgeable members of the public and another council member. There are laws in place that could have prevented the serious losses to our seal colony. Apparently, planning and public works slash city manager staff leadership, who were making the planning decisions, did not understand the local coastal program policies and ordinances regarding both harbor seals and CDP exemptions or the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Pacific Grove has the largest harbor seal rookery on Monterey Bay, which attracts visitors from around the world. Staff involved in projects on our coastal zone need to become familiar with the Federal Marine Mammal Protection Act and learn what the words in the LCP mean. Staff need training. NOAA, the marine sanctuary, should not have to intervene again to prevent further harm by a city project. It was clear from council's discussion in March that you didn't want the harbor seals harmed. It's also clear that we need an enforceable ordinance that assures the law is understood long before contract funding approval comes before council. And the sensitivity of marine wildlife in the coastal zone needs to be understood from experts. It's not a decision for staff. Harbor seals are a vitally important species in the local coastal ecosystem. An ordinance such as Councilmember Coletti proposes is absolutely essential to the survival of the marvelous abundance and diversity of wildlife on our beautiful coast.
Thank you.
Michelle Rainey.
Welcome.
Hello. My husband and I sent in a lengthy comment letter, which I will not try to read now. But I ask that it is made a part of the record, and I hope you have seen it and read it. We are in favor of the ordinance as outlined by Councilman Coletti and ask that it should include other public works, projects, and loud noises that would be in violation of the MMPA in the vicinity of the rookeries during the pupping season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Camp.
Welcome. Welcome, Mr. Camp.
Sorry, didn't realize I had unmute myself. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I wanted to comment on just a few aspects of this. One is, as I read it, what strikes me is that the term "roadwork" is a very broad term. And the question in my mind would be, are there some types of roadwork that can, in fact, safely be conducted during the time of the pupping season? And simple things like striping a parking place, changing a meterhead, any of a number of other types of issues, which I'm sure the Public Works Director could make comment on. Number two, protection of beaches. There is mention in the agenda report of protection of beaches. Our original seal policy and seal ordinance were predicated on protecting the use of beaches that are not currently occupied for the use of people. And that's why our ordinance emphasizes Lever's point. On those, noise actually can be an asset to help make sure that seals don't colonize those beaches. The scope from Erdley to Carmel really kind of touches on that. Is it narrower scope? Could it be even narrower still? There's a comment that there's no fiscal impact, and certainly our experience is that any restrictive ordinance that inhibits people from doing a necessary job causes an extra burden and expense. And I would urge that the council, as you consider this at the next iteration, ask the question, are the costs and the burdens and the prohibitions worth the benefits? And the third thing is, there's been several mentions of the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Back when we got the CDP from Coastal Commission, the Marine Mammal Protection Act was not at all a help to us. In fact, it was a real hindrance. In Hawaii, there is a case called Hawaii Shooting. I've described that in my note to you. Hawaii Shooting sued the state of Hawaii over restrictions the state had placed. And the court determined that Hawaii did not have jurisdiction on this, and their protective measures were not valid. The law may have evolved since then, but at the time, certainly, the Marine Mammal Protection Act was the exclusive domain of the federal government, not state and local government. So, in our application, we emphasized enhanced visitor benefits of the actions we took, and I think with good cause. So, thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Carrie Rotoli.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'll be brief. I would echo what many other people have said here that I support and encourage you to pass an ordinance that's stronger, clearer, easier to uphold and protect our harbor seals. Our wildlife is very important, as I'm sure you're aware. But it's, it's, I don't know, we need to just really put some thoughtful action behind those words and prevent tragedies like the loss of so many harbor seal pups. That was just horrible to read and watch. And as people have said, it was preventable. So, I trust you guys to do the right thing. I would, I would also echo the, somebody made a good point earlier that the wording maybe could be a little clearer. Road construction, there's other types of noise that are disruptive and harmful. So, maybe it could be worded such, though, that it's not just about, you know, the road being worked on, but like they said, maybe the trees or things like that. So, yeah, thanks. Do what you can to protect those seals. They're really important.
Thank you. Nora McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Yes, I would also like to call in support of this new ordinance or this updated, I should say, ordinance. I think it goes a long way to clearing up any ambiguity that may have contributed to the loss of the twenty-three pups that may have been completely unnecessary i-if this hadn't happened. And so, anything we can do that helps us to better coordinate so that things can be timed in such a way that we can get the needed city work done, and everything that needs to be done can be followed through in a timely manner. But to do that with protection of our coastal areas in mind, I think is very important. We, as stewards of the marine mammals and the protected area here, I think is very important that we take that into account. As others have mentioned, it is a huge draw. So, if we want to talk about fiscal impact, there is an impact in the visitors who may not continue to come to Pacific Grove if this continues to be a problem. And so, I think being mindful of that, it is a great asset that we have that can draw the public and the locals alike. It's something that is highly treasured as part of Pacific Grove, and I think part of the city's responsibility and I'm sure goal is to ensure that we support the things that support not only bringing the tourists, but also protecting the nature that is an important part of our area. So, I would like to strongly request that we pass this and ensure that we can continue the protections into the future. And as somebody else had mentioned, maybe have a calendar where it's more clear to see when those times are so that we can ensure that we can plan needed work according to that schedule so that we're really creating a win-win situation where we're supporting nature, supporting the community, and supporting the economy. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Janet Cohen.
Welcome.
Hi, Janet Cohen. As some speakers for this ordinance are also appellants to the proposed ATC Hotel Project, you may be thinking, oh, no, if I vote to have this ordinance drawn up, I will damage our position at Coastal Commission to approve the hotel. But actually, if you think about it, quite the opposite would be true. Therefore, thank you in advance for responding to the sad loss of harbor seals pups from a steeply increased number of miscarriages during loud nearby roadwork on Ocean View Boulevard. Voting to recommend the city attorney to draft an ordinance with restrictive requirements, including seeking NOAA's input during seal pregnancy pupping season for nearby adjacent construction as brought forward by Councilmember Coletti, will help. Institutional memory fades away. We remember now what happened this spring to innocent harbor seals, unintended, and yet still a serious reality. But who will remember or take preventive action in five, ten, twenty years without an ordinance being written? Many protective laws happen post-injury for human safety, too, as seat belts, motorcycle helmets, bicycle helmets for children, none of which were in place when I was young. Looking back, it is always with great regret if the loss of life of humans or animals could have been prevented if the law that came later had been in place. But somehow, we missed it. Thank you for not missing it tonight.
Thank you.
Mark Jackman.
Welcome.
Unmute. Good evening again. I, too, would like to support updating the ordinance thirteen oh eighteen. I think the CNI's mentioned the implementation issues that are not covered in the details of the update. But in fact, this ordinance, in making it good, we've had many good ordinances, ordinances in the past that have failed or were ineffective due to implementation issues. I think this ordinance update is necessary a- a- as a better foundation. But I do anticipate, if you, if you don't change it tonight, that staff would need to enhance the implementation measures with permit guidance conditions or permit instructions or other devices to, to make it more efficacious, make it work better a- and, and eliminate the sharp edges or the missing points. Finally, in trying to moderate this draft update, maybe open the aperture to allow some work sometimes. That's a, that's a problematic approach because it, it introduces ambiguity that, 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 that it, it puts a lot of pressure, I think, on staff, if you really want to know, to try to make the decision, was, is this going to harm? Is this not going to hurt? It, it opens a Pandora's box that has more downside than upside for, for the city and for, for even the contractor whoever's doing it. And I would say about the reference, one of the speakers had to the, 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 the MPPA, the, 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 the Act for Endangered Animals that the, it has been updated several times. And for example, we know, we now know that the definitions of, of a take for endangered animals, okay? Harm, that is, or da- damage, if you're not familiar with take, takes and the levels and conditions for, for these, these animals are more concrete than ever. The data are more, are more plentiful and the, and the these conditions of how to process and how to react are more detailed than they ever were in the past, even for PG. So we should, we should just go forward with this. This is a great initiative. I think it's a, it's a, it's a no-brainer. It doesn't hurt. It does help. Those, the, the seals are, are, are a unique and treasured resource that, that are kind of taken for granted out there in certain elements, and it shouldn't be. Thank you, and good luck. Please pass it.
Thank you.
Carmela De Garcia?
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for your service. I've heard a lot of good comments this evening, and Mr. Siani and Mr. Camp, they both raised very good points and questions. And what I would suggest, well, I think what needs to be done is that the the draft that you have before you, in my opinion, needs to be very well, fully developed and to address some of the questions. As an example, Mr. Siani said, you know, development versus construction, just what is roadwork from Mr. Camp. My comments are about the American Ten Canary when that construction begins. And NOAA, whether or not they have been advised of this proposed ordinance and whether or not they would have time to, I don't know, be looking at different jobs and what have you, whatever their role will be and whatever that looks like. I think needs to be defined. Also, with regards to Ocean View Boulevard. So as an example, like First Street, Second Street, they go all the way up to Lighthouse. So is that surrounding area? Will that be included as far as if people want to remodel? Or I heard mentioned trees being cut down, what have you. So, and then the other thing, too, is, you know, the CIP comes before the City Council on an annual basis. And I think it's all of our responsibility to examine that CIP and look at the different items with regards to construction and, you know, heavy work and what have you, and to question, you know, when is this going to be done? Perhaps maybe having a timeline incorporated into the CIP so one can see it very clearly. Anyway, so yeah, I, I would agree to, to move forward. But then again, it has to be very thorough, and a lot of these questions and comments that have been raised, in my opinion, need to be addressed and either incorporated into the ordinance or explained at the time it's being presented. One thing I would hate to have done is for staff's hands to be tied to the point that you know, work doesn't get done. It has to be deferred or whatever. I, I just would, would hate to see that happen. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Edwards?
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate having the time to speak. I'm a new resident of the Monterey Bay area, and this issue has only recently come to my attention. I, I'm just, I'm kind of surprised and unclear about why it would be an issue. I mean, we're in, the Monterey Bay is a marine sanctuary. It's known throughout the world. And I don't understand why we're fighting for something that seems so basic. And I just want to strongly encourage you to vote for the ordinance. I thank you. I especially thank Councilmember Coletti for bringing this up. I think it's really important. And as far as making exceptions, I don't think there needs to be any exceptions. There should not be any noise in the area during pupping season. This is an area in which we live, and we have something extremely special, and we need to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Blaskovich?
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Blaskovich, and I'm addressing this draft ordinance from Mr. Coletti on roadwork and restrictions and the pupping season. This may sound like a simple bureaucratic matter, but there's a lot of emotion and some possible misinformation surrounding this issue. Everyone loves harbor seals, and everyone wants to protect them in our natural environment. But our actions to protect him and an ordinance you draft must be based on scientific evidence, findings, and facts, not just feelings and hunches. As a background, I have a bachelor's degree in zoology and a master's in oceanography. And I also was appointed to and served on the NOAA Science Advisory Board in Washington, DC for several years. And to prepare my comments for this evening, I did a search of peer-reviewed scientific articles, and articles published in credible scientific journals on harbor seals, noise, mortality, and fetal health. I have some of those abstracts, and I can share them to you if you need some good reading material to cure your insomnia. First of all, in my search, I did not find a single article associating terrestrial noise with harbor seal miscarriages. On the topic of noise, what I did find is more concern about marine noise than terrestrial noise. Fishing vessels, tourist vessels, and other ocean-based sources of noise are more disturbing to harbor seals than noise transmitted in the air. Water is a very good conductor of noise, as we all know from those World War II movies, where they ping to locate submarines. What I also found in several articles is that because chemical contaminants magnify in the marine food chain, ocean pollutants are in fact related to harbor seal mortality and fetal abortions. These contaminants include PCBs, heavy metals, organic chemicals, and even the avian bird flu. We know the beaches along our coast are occasionally closed due to the high bacteria count from water runoff. It's also well-established that variations in the availability of food are related to the viability and health of harbor seals. But back to the question of noise, is terrestrial noise harmful to harbor seals? The answer is terrestrial noise can disturb harbor seals, but in a very limited sense, and certainly not as much as marine noise and chemical contamination. In drafting this ordinance, what scientific basis can you use? And my best advice to you is to continue to coordinate with NOAA and to follow the NOAA guidelines that's published online. And I quote, "For seals and sea lions in the water and on shore remain at least 50 yards away above half a football field." In conclusion, yes, please protect the harbor seals or coastal ecosystem, but do so based on sound scientific findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Knight?
Welcome.
Sorry about that. Hello. Sorry. God, you think you know what you're doing, and you don't. Hi, good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. What I've been hearing, as I listen to everyone and as I listen to the reports, is that there are many processes in place, not just at the city level, but at the coastal commission level as well. And although the loss of pups is, is absolutely a tragedy, I, and I think that this ordinance seems so innocent, yet I think that I have to echo the last speaker that somehow we need to base this on scientific studies, not just observations. Because these observations could have numerous explanations that may have nothing to do with noise, that may have to do with many things. And if you read the observations that are in your report, they say things like, well, they're very, and we don't know, and over time, and our daily averages, and we're looking at one year. I mean, if I looked at my company for one year and said, well, and compared it to one year, I mean, that's just not the way you make projections or the way you really try and determine impact. You need to look at a longer timeframe. And so I would hope that moving forward, that you would consider that there's a policy in place. Perhaps it wasn't followed correctly, and there are ways that the city needs to put better stopgaps in there for people to say and to come forward and say, we're not staying on our processes, but we need to gather our data, and we need to work to enforce the laws that are already on the books. And I'd also, just on an aside, like to point out, since someone brought up the ATC project, that if, case anyone's worried that they already have limitations on that project, that any excavations will be done outside of the pupping season. So it's another way that they have already considered impacts to the natural environment. So I, I just, I hope that before you plunge forward, because on first reading, I too thought, well, what's the big deal? But I think that we really need to, with, with great power comes great responsibility. So before you charge forward on doing a new ordinance that powers on another thing that has so many varying impacts, that you take the moment and you step back and, and you really try and base it on, on a much more sound, scientific basis. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. Very interesting. I consider science is evolving all the time, and science is. Observation is required. And it's documented. And look at all the citizen scientist programs now that other scientists compile documentation and want all of this. Well, we will certainly have a fiscal impact if all the seals miscarry and die in front of our tourist lineup. Yeah, that will certainly be a fiscal impact. As far as this goes, experts, yes. NOAA. This ordinance, which I urge you to adopt, says, yes, city staff doesn't necessarily have the expertise. They certainly don't, and certainly City Council allowing that to go forward at that time did not. It was a timeframe that we, you knew was constrained. And old Dango thought it would be done, but you know, it wasn't, and it certainly did. The other thing is seal pups, it, it's not just a, a two-month time. You can't put those limits on it because sometimes they go a little bit earlier, sometimes a little bit later. La Jolla has a whole six-month stop on it. We're asking, in this ordinance, just to consult with NOAA before. Don't just rely on staff opinion or council voting to move forward on a CIP project, which was clearly, Dango expected it to be done sooner. It was a real dicey type timeframe then, and this is just a very simple definition. And, and the outside expert consultant of NOAA to protect one of our main tourist attractions and beloved animals that need protecting. That's all. We need something else. And this looks to be pretty simple, clear, with steps to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Would ask that we not have the public call out staff members by name, casting blame for actions. Thank you.
Do we have any further public comment?
We do. Kathy Nollet?
Welcome.
Hello. I would like to thank the council member who has brought this issue up to our attention. I am not a resident of Pacific Grove, but as a coastal naturalist, I find myself in Pacific Grove volunteering and talking to so many people that visit. And one of the main reasons why they visit is to come see the wildlife. There is a lot of wildlife, but the main wildlife are the harbor seals. We would love a scientific study to be done on them. But right now, what we have are major observances to see what exactly is happening with the seals and what is happening to the seals during the pupping season. There are so many issues that can be taken care of, and this issue will help. It will just simply help what can and cannot be done during the pupping season. And that's just a simple fact. And I would love to continue volunteering out in Pacific Grove and talking to so many people about this wonderful wildlife that occurs here, instead of explaining to them why the seals and the pups are not here at a major referee in Pacific Grove. So please consider passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more public speakers do we have on this item?
I have two more hands raised. Tom Aikman?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. And, oh, you can probably cut me off if you want, because I don't really see this as a complicated issue. I think the measure before tonight's just common sense. The city staff made a mistake this year, and it resulted in city staff and the city council, I'm sorry, the city as a whole, made a mistake this year, and it resulted in the deaths of about a third of our harbor seal pups. Don't believe it was intentional. There are laws on the books that would have prevented it. We have local laws, state laws, and federal laws that were just simply overlooked or not known. There's staff turnover, there's city council turnover. It's very difficult to try to know all the working parts of this seaside city. It's very difficult to know all the laws and regulations that govern them. We had a mishap this year. This proposal, as I see it, simply draws the laws that are already on the books together and calls them to attention so that we don't do that again. It makes it easier, one source reference, to say basically that the harvest seal pupping season is a very sensitive time of year for these animals. And they have special protections in law now. It's nothing new that you're doing. All you're doing is packaging it in a way to sort of remind everybody to make it easier to remember. And I'm going to make a mistake here, I know. I should not respond to the lack of science on this, but I do have to say, like you, some of you know that, that my wife, Kim, and I have been monitoring this harvest population for many years. We covered this extensively this year. We've written a report. We've documented it with hundreds and hundreds of photographs, videos, sound recordings. We presented them to the appropriate government agency. Someday, hopefully, they will become a scientific paper that'll yield some new information on how sounds on land disturb and in fact kill harbor seals. It's a fairly new science, and I hate to say that it was provided here, but it was. So what's before you tonight? Again, I think it's just a common sense measure to try to not make a mistake again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Of course, I agree with most of the callers that called in, and I would urge you to pass this. Yes, it is simply. Kind of giving the staff something to look at so that they're aware. Of the laws, the laws are already there to protect the harbor seals. We're not talking about Lover's Point. We are talking about those areas specified. We're not talking about Lighthouse Avenue. We're talking about. Ocean View Boulevard, right in front of the Rookery Beaches, and we're talking about the pupping season. So normally, we would have a 10% loss to normal conditions that would happen. Maybe. You know, that was not a thriving pup. Or maybe that mom was new and just abandoned it. This year, it was a 32% loss. That is unusual, and we have been documenting pupping seasons for 14 years. So we have 14 years worth of data. And, you know, in the past. We would have sometimes during. The 2014-15 year when climate change really took hold. You would have a food supply problem. That was not the case this year. This was not an issue of food supply. This was a noise disturbance. And the reason. Nobody can find data on it is because this has not been done near a Rookery Beach in the past. Scientists have looked. For studies about this on air noise up in the air, and all there is is underwater noise disturbance studies. So this is new. Harbor seal hearing is better than ours and it can be damaged by loud noise. And we all know, we've seen them down there flush the beach from, from loud noises. So this would just really help to. Really educate the staff so that they know. You know, so they're not put in a position that to make a guess. They have to check with NOAA first. So I encourage you to go ahead and pass this or have the lawyer guy work on it. Because we really do want to. Protect our harbor seals. We have lots of people that come here, a lot of people on Facebook that talk to us and are coming to visit. So I encourage you to do this. This would be the right thing to do. Really for the community and for the vulnerable pups. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands.
All right, well, close public comment. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I absolutely support this. Thank you, Councilmember Coletti. Thank you to the members of the public. Who spoke tonight and all the emails that were sent in as well. I do agree with many of the things that were said and that we were put into a expedited position last year and. You know, just having this extra check to be able to be required to consult with NOAA. Who will have the updated standards and. Guidelines as, as the years go forward. Is a great way to protect all the people that sit up here and all the people that work in this building. So conceptually, I very much support it. I have questions also, I, I. You know, if I were, I'm not making a motion now, but I would like it to come back with better definitions. Around construction, development, roadwork. I'd like it also to possibly come back with. So if excessive noise is the problem that causes the. Problems for the seals, why is it, and maybe I'm just wrong here, but like if the beach, it's, we've gone 0.25 miles to the east, about 0.41 miles or something to the west. Are there two beaches? Am I missing something? Why are we, there's two beaches? Okay. So you've, you've done pretty equidistant from the two beaches to get those streets? Okay. That answers that question. And then, I mean, we, I know that as part of the sequel review for the Tin Canary, we require, we're requiring them to go to NOAA to consult before they can do construction. So. It would make sense that we would do, you know, follow that rule as well. And so then my last question is just around enforcement. I mean, what do we do for violations? And I don't think. We're going to violate our own rules, hopefully not. But I do know there was an element to this whole. Thing that transpired where it was. Caltrans, I believe, that was, you know, came in and, and there were other agencies that were doing work. And so. You know, how do we, so an enforcement piece to it, Mr. Perick would be the other bring back for me. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I concur with Councilmember Tomlinson's. Comment about an enforcement piece. You know, something else that. You know, in addition to the ordinance, I mean, we do already have protections in our city code, so I think it's important that. You know. Sometimes it's not going to be followed. Unfortunately, we experienced that. And so. You know, just some additional stopgaps and, and. Suggestions is like for council members, staff and members of the public. When we start discussing the CIP, like, please remind me, you know, I think that that's important. You know, for the next fiscal year, like. Have comment there, comment then and just be like, hey, you know, don't forget that this month or these months is when. The seal pupping season is. I think that would help. You know, for us to be proactive and thoughtful. And then also. You know, for staff, like, can we implement some sort of project? Mechanism that when bringing the CIP to council, specifically when it has to do with paving and sewer work. That there's a schedule set ahead of time that doesn't conflict with the pupping season. I think that that would be really important. We get like. You know, 2,500 square miles or whatever, square feet, we don't necessarily see when that's happening. And where, and so that oversight is the reason why the situation happened that it did. And so I think if we. Again, with council members, you know, be mindful, let's be mindful of that and sort of like the devil's in the details, right? So something else, when we're talking about definitions. Is to define emergency work. Sort of at the same time when Caltrans or CalM was doing work. Across the street, we had a residential. Like plumbing catastrophe, and so they were doing work too. So I think that we need to be, even though that was probably a rarity. I think we need to define emergency work. And what are those specific requirements? So I don't really want to see like general construction remodeling or tree trimming, like that's. For me is not emergency work. But if you have a plumbing emergency, you know, I mean, I do think that we have to give some concessions. Because there are people who live right across the street. So, and thank you for bringing this. I think it's really important. You know, we have. The, the Rookery and the, and the protection of the sea pups and like. I think three or four different, different sections of our code. So it'll be nice to just sort of. You know, have one code that we can go to. I think I found some in like traffic and some, I mean, they're just, it's sort of sprinkled all over the place. So something. Where, you know, a new council member or residence can go to and staff, of course, can go to and read and understand. You know, the timing, the consequences, et cetera. My only question is. You know. When I was researching this, like right now, there's sort of this like weird phenomenon of like all of these. Sea, sea lions at the wharf, right? There's like. 70, 100, and there's literally people like five feet away. You know, and there's noise and this and that. So I just. Obviously, and I'm not an environmentalist, I'm not a marine biologist, but it just, I don't want to be chasing the. The section, you know, what if all of a sudden the. They decide to go down somewhere else and have their babies, you know what I mean? So I just. I think about that. I mean, I don't know if that would happen, but. The, all the sea lions at the wharf is really bizarre. And so I just would want to make sure that this, and of course, we could, I guess. amend the municipal code, but could there be something that is just. Generic that when and if the pups move, like that protection would follow them, right? Like, say they decide to go to Lover's Point Beach one year, we don't know. You know, so instead of like having to go through. You know, meeting the ordinance, changing the ordinance, you know, two reads, like, could it just sort of go with them? Just some sort of flexibility, I think would be good. So, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McAdams brought up some great points. And I, I think there has to be some clarity about this because. You know, what about the, I'm just going to throw out a couple of things, sweeping the streets, going down the street. There on Ocean and sweeping. What if there was? An emergency situation where a pipe burst or, or a gas main broke. Is that considered? We need to deal with that right now. Also, in regards to the ATC project, they've already done some mitigating circumstances where they're not going to be constructing during. Pupping season. And I do appreciate you, Councilmember Coletti, for bringing this forward, but I just have some other questions like the. You know, with the autobahn happening, the classic cars, I'm sure you've heard the noise. Going down 68 or down Ocean Boulevard, they're, they're, they're flying with those loud mufflers. So what does that affect the? The people? And then plus, we also have the tour buses. That's very popular right now, and they're cruising down in front of the beaches and they're, they're not quiet. And so these are some of the. Questions I would bring up and along with the Silmar Trail. The trail where electric bikes go, the 10 speeds, the 15 speeds, and when they talk. It sounds like they're on microphones talking to each other as they're going by there. So. There's just some clarity I, I would like to see in regards to that.
Councilmember Smith. Sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my understanding tonight, and I'm going to pose a question to Luke here. Luke, my question is, are you proposing two? Specific amendments to the code as are stated in your PowerPoint?
Those are templates that are going to act as informing the city. Attorney of what I believe represents a good implementation. Of restricting roadwork. And I'll, when I get to my point, I'll, I'll be happy to read from Miriam, the definition of roadwork.
Oh, okay. And so. Is it's going to fit within this? Code scheme that we already have that was from the 2013 ordinance? Is that what you're intending?
Yeah, in fact, I even chose the section numbers so that it would flow within what exists currently.
Okay, so you have further elucidation of these points now? Is it, okay, I'll cede my time.
Yes, I remember Coletti.
Thank you.
Do you want, you go keep, no, all right, okay.
Well, I'll first respond, Ms. Jenny, Councilmember McAdams brought up a good point about Lover's Point. That's already in the code. So that's an 04060. I'll, I will read from Miriam. The dictionary as far as the definition of roadwork. Road, roadwork is defined as work done in constructing or repairing roads. That's, that's the definition of roadwork that I used. In developing this kind of a straw man ordinance. And could you put up slide? The slides again, please, Sandra, the implementation slide and specifically. And, and why she's doing that, I'm going to also mention, I heard some comments that this is somehow regulating beaches. I, I don't know how that interpretation was ever. Made, that's not true. There was a question of what the definition of roadwork is. I just read from the dictionary on what I meant by it. As far as someone made a comp, a comment that the Marine Mammal Protection Act is a hindrance, it's, it's an inconvenience. Well. That may be, but it's also the law. So all I'm doing in this proposal is asking that the city is going to talk to the regulator. And get guidance. And it's for specific criteria. The criteria is for non-emergency roadwork and other construction. Within the Ocean View Boulevard right of way between Erdley and Carmel. The city shall report all emergency work to local NOAA offices as soon as possible. Obviously, when you have an emergency, and this is where I was trying to add some flexibility, when you have an emergency, a, a pipe bursts at. You know, 3:00 AM on a Saturday or something like that. You've got to mobilize, you've got to get that done. But you also need to contact the regulator and let them know that you're working on it. And as a follow-up, there may be some mitigation measures that NOAA, acting as the regulator. May suggest. There was some comment made about streets up from Ocean View, this, this, as can be seen here in the implementation, it's specifically for the Ocean View Boulevard right of way. It's not for. You know, streets feeding into it, it's for the Ocean View Boulevard right of way. So. I think it is, Tom Aikman mentioned it's common sense. I look at this as common sense as well. Just go talk to the regulator. That's really what we just need to be doing. Thank you.
Yes, I'm looking for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coletti, for bringing this item forward. I would say that the two women in the council made some excellent points and you guys are leaving, so, but. The one thing that I wanted to say, first of all, is there are a lot of volunteers involved, and I would first like to thank all of them because this is really a thankless job, and my hat's off to all of you for all that you're doing. So I, when I was researching this, I came across quite a few points. So, and I recognize that noise is a potential threat to marine animals, the marine ecosystem, so on and so forth. And these animals do require what is called echolocation and communication skills for survival. So however, as I, as I read it, there is still scientific uncertainty over. How the effects of noise can actually correlate to the ocean ecosystem as well as the marine mammals. That's based on what I've read. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this item, but I would like the attorney to consider a few points here, which I think some of the. Callers noted as well. So how to actually regulate noise creating activities? Has actually resulted in lawsuits. And. One of the examples that I want to cite is the UFO shooting of Hawaii, shooting as in C-H-U-T-I-N-G. Versus the state of Hawaii. And, and when I read that case. It's a striking parallel to what is happening here within our town. In that case. The parasailing operator, which is the UFO shooting company. Could conduct, was conducting commercial parasailing during the seasonal times when humpback whales were there, and humpback whales are, are protected species. So. A case was filed and the district court actually granted a summary judgment in favor of UFO shooting. So all that I'm letting you know is that. While you're preparing this, just be aware of some of the. Cases that have happened in the past. And just keep that in mind as you're defining elements. And speaking of definitions. I do need to think when we term definitions, roadwork for some, for me or for anybody else. Could have one meaning versus to the party that is actually doing the roadwork. So we need to make this equitable. So you need to think about all parties. So as you're coming up with definitions around roadwork or transportation or whatever is required there and within this policy. I suggest looking at it from an equitable eye. And then finally, like, some, some folks have already mentioned this, but there is a. There are cases when there are emergency actions taken. So. The, the agenda item as agreed says that there's no financial impact, but technically speaking, if for whatever reason, whatever we come up with. Say it had, we have to go contact an authority before taking, before undertaking anything else. And within the timeframe, something happens like a pipe burst, it is a fiscal impact to the city. So. The fact that there is no financial impact isn't exactly true. So I would suggest that when you bring this back, probably my suggestion would be to say. A financial impact unknown. So some, some things just to consider. But I think this is a delicate balance between how we manage the environment and our policies here. So thank you.
May we have a vote, please? It's getting late. Yeah, we'll need a motion.
I'd be happy to make the motion, Your Honor.
Please.
Direct the city attorney to return with a draft ordinance. Yes, it's on. Direct the city attorney to return with a draft ordinance to implement roadwork restrictions during the harbor seal pupping season. And use the PowerPoint presentation as a template for developing such an ordinance.
I'll second that.
A vote, please, now.
Thank you. Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmembers Pedri?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protememilio?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. And now we're on to item thirteen C, automatic access to public comments. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, we're going to hold a conceptual discussion to provide automatic access to public comment. I don't have a PowerPoint, but Ms. Sandra, at some point, I would like to share my screen to show a couple of websites. That's okay. So more and more cities are just posting the public comment that they've received. Some cities are actually putting it in the agenda, in the specific agenda item. That seems very time extensive to me. And some cities are just kind of lumping them all and posting them in a separate attachment online. These are not printed. And cities are really good. Los Altos, I'm going to share my screen now. They actually have, I think, a, a good example of clear submission instructions. So the public knows, okay, if I get my, my public comment in by this day, this time, then it will be included. And then if you don't meet that submission deadline, all of the public comments would be posted later when the minutes are posted. So it would be the minutes like at the beginning of the attachment and then the public comment at the end. So hold on, let me pull this up. All right. Can you see my screen? Great. So again, this is Los Altos and this is their, I think, very clear, very defined instructions when they post the public comment and then when the supplemental is posted. For me, in looking into this and sort of studying the cities that do this, some are, like I said, very organized and they have it in the agenda item. I don't think that that is very realistic and feasible for our staff capacity. But I do think that it would be interesting and, and worth it to try to just have all the public comment available and automatically posted. Let me stop sharing. Sorry. And so that's just, you know, I'm, I'm just wanting to have a discussion about this and see if this is sort of a path that we would like to go down. I think, you know, obviously we've done a lot of work with transparency, public participation. I think this would sort of add to it. And really with the, yes, you can do a public records request and get the public comment, but I, I actually see that to be more time intensive than just posting them. So that's all.
Do we have public comments?
Not posted on the website.
On public comments.
Sally Moore, I wasn't going to speak, but I remember maybe fifteen years ago, we used to have them laying on the table out here and you'd have to quickly read beforehand. And it would be very helpful to see other people's thoughts beforehand. I don't know, again, if you're, I don't think it most, I don't think it goes on the website until about Friday night and whether that gives enough time for all this to trans, good night, transpire, what it said. But I think it would be very helpful to have that. And I'm looking forward to seeing those comments again. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
This is just a question about how Los Altos handles it. If someone has submitted public comments five days before and it's in the packet and then they veer in person, do they update the packet? Or is it, how, how do they correct the actual comment? Or I'm curious.
Thank you.
We do have some online callers. Inga Lawrence and Dimer?
Welcome.
Councilmember McAdams, I think that's an excellent idea. I've been kind of asking for that all along. And yes, I'm as old as, as Sally Moore in remembering these things of having printed ones out there on the table and reading them. And it was absolutely wonderful. Now, interestingly enough, the Traffic and Safety Commission is the only one, and Mr. Kubica does post all the pub, public comment letters that he receives by that time. It is in the agenda packet and I thank him every time for doing that. Well, I've been asking for this for a very long time and I am so glad you brought it forward. What an excellent idea. So I would absolutely say move on on this. Yes, get it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani?
Welcome.
Thank you. Making public comments more transparent would be a big step forward for the city. It's so important for written comments, written comments to be posted online rather than filed in a binder in the CDD office or anyone who, who has the time to go into the city hall if they want to confirm their own comments. That whether their own comments have been filed and to read other comments before a meeting. And I do remember them being on the table too. At, at least, but going into city hall was the practice when I went into view comments several years ago. Accurate records of public comment are important for transparency and public trust and posting them publicly could improve accuracy. Apparently PG's website only allows for one option, which is example two, an attachment one, number one of the agenda report. So the city could perhaps add another line to the minutes column to include a packet for comments. Timing, of course, is important, which Los Altos example tries to address. But it appears they post their agenda packets far in advance of meetings. Their website states that written comments on agenda items must be received by twelve days prior to the scheduled council meeting to be included in the initial posting of the city council agenda packet. So apparently the comments would have to be written before the agenda is published. Then they have a schedule though, this is the good part, of when comments have to be received to be included in supplemental packets of which they scheduled two before the meeting and one after. Since PG generally only posts council agendas five days before the meeting, right before the weekend, I think posting comments on the city's website by noon of the, the day of the meeting, I think. If they were received by two PM the day before the meeting might be reasonable. That's the best timing I could come up with. And any further comments received before the start of the meeting could be posted a couple of days later as Los Altos describes. The Los Altos example of inserting emails into agenda packets looks challenging and doesn't appear to be consistent. And again, it requires writing comments before the agenda is published. So what I'd like to see, based on my current understanding of what's possible, is as I've described, public comments posted by noon, the day of the meeting in a separate packet shown in the minutes line with another packet to follow. If there's a better way, that would be great. Comments would need to be as accessible and timely as possible for the public and as manageable as possible for staff. I hope your discussion will lead PG to a practice of consistent and timely online access to written public comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani?
Welcome.
Good evening. I think it's really important that you as council members and not only that, other committees and commissions and the planning commission especially, that there is a dynamic that occurs at a public hearing. For example, the skateboard park discussion earlier this evening. It's really important to hear all points of view. And for you or a committee or commission or board to hear all points of view. Because it allows you to, to combine those thoughts, develop your own opinions and decisions. It's the same with correspondence. So the coastal commission, and since you're in, you have a segment of the Pacific Grove is in the coastal zone. You may want to look at how the coastal commission handles correspondence. They call it correspondence. They have a place for all correspondence to be considered. And what's important about that is that not only can the coastal commissioners in that case, or you as a council, be able to look at this information, but other members of the public can look at that information to help form and inform their, their comments and their opinions. And someone brought up the idea of, or the concept of, well, what happens when there's a public hearing? And you speak at the public hearing after you've submitted a comment? Well, all of that is part of the dynamic of forming an opinion to make a decision. So thank you, Councilmember McAdams, for bringing this forward. Please develop a policy that's appropriate for Pacific Grove. I, I and look at the coastal commission's system for developing correspondence and logging it into the system. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janet Cohen?
Welcome.
Hi, Janet Cohen. I just want to concur with everyone. I'm thrilled with this and I think it will just help everybody, you know, council members or whatever, planning commission, anyone, it's going to help the public and who, and it, it's a really wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring back council, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would suggest that we let staff have some time to percolate on this and come back with some kind of suggestion if they're willing to do so and tell us what they think they can do and how fast and all that kind of stuff. Because I think just sitting up here tonight, trying to go through different concepts doesn't really make a lot of sense when the people with the boots on the ground are going to have to do it eventually.
Councilmember Pedri?
Yes, I would like to thank Councilmember McAdams for bringing this. I, I just had a quick comment. It says automatic access. I, I don't see automatic. I mean, i- is that really possible? Because this seems like a manual effort, but does our software, I just, I had, I had that question, does our software allow comments to be automated?
Councilmember Pedri, through the mayor. We could not change the minutes that's located currently on our website that Councilmember McAdams is referring to. That is written into the hardware of our agenda management system. So I have actually come up with a few different things, but it does take a, a manual process. We have not had, obviously, when COVID hit, we tried to accomplish this in other ways. We would consolidate all of the written public comments and include it in the errata sheet at one time. And then we were also attaching it to each particular item as, as the correspondence came in. That immediately gets it out to the public. So there's several things that you can do. And if you'll just allow me to share my screen really briefly. But it, but it, it will take some thought, obviously. As you can see on our agenda, it has here copies of the agenda packet and it tells you that the most effective method of communication with the city council is by sending an email. And then it's recommended that the communication be sent no later than nine AM. That was the packet of emails that would be consolidated and provided to everyone by errata. And also attached to, or put in a binder. We, we actually used to have a media binder as well that would provide them. But things have changed, obviously. And so we do now have an agenda management system. So there's several ways that you can do it. I'm looking at the agenda here. However, let me see. There were several ways that I thought of. The minutes, again, on the webpage cannot be changed. However, we could at the end of the meeting, it would be after the meeting. When we've got the minutes signed, we could consolidate all of the public comment and attach it with the minutes. It could be done that way. We could go back to attaching it via errata. Of course, there would be a cutoff time as indicated on the agenda. And then we would have to figure out how to attach comments that came in after that. And that could be again via errata that or the most simplest way is to continue, or is to start attaching it again to each agenda item as it pertains to that particular agenda item. We could do that as the emails come in. So public has, you know, immediate access to it. And that's through the agenda management systems. I'll show this screen very briefly. So if, if the public goes to the regular meeting and goes to the agenda item, they will see a linked version of the agenda here. I'll go down a little bit more. Resolution, if we had public comment that was attached to this particular item, it would then show up under the attachments. And it would be public comment. And we could consolidate all of the public comment, obviously, that was relative to that particular item. And that way it would just be one entry. But there, but there is some manual work to that. And, and then the, the, I guess, the most, I think I mentioned the combining it to the minutes after, after the minutes have been signed. And then finally, we are working together with information, with our chief information officer for records management system. And it could be just a matter of a folder, creating a folder, you know, for that, for that council meeting and then plugging in all of the public comment there. And so that's coming down the pike as well. So there are several options that we could do. And I just, I'll stop sharing my screen, but.
Yes, just from my standpoint, I, I would say whatever makes it less burdensome for you to combine things is my opinion. And so if there are more, more, if there's more than one approach near term and long term, I think I'll be open to ideas there. So thank you.
Mayor Protememilio?
Thank you. I agree that maybe give back to you. And I just want to use this for an example. I have nothing against people that spoke on the skateboard. I'm an old skateboarder from way back. So I, I, I'm all for that. But I, I noticed there was over an hour of public comment about skateboards. Just curiosity, how would that, you wouldn't put a whole hour of comments on that, would you? You consolidated, wouldn't you?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And this is just written comments, public comment.
Okay.
Not oral.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the oral would just be indicated as this, you know, as the speaker is by name and in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I thank Councilmember McAdams for bringing this forward. It's interesting also to hear that other cities and Los Altos, I'm impressed anyhow. And I certainly concur with the comments, the suggestion to have staff come back with maybe a couple of options that are, at least, I would suggest that, you know, we start simple as possible. You know, less, less complications. For example, the, do we want to have just comments that are made from a certain time period before a council meeting? For example, I said a Los Altos, it requires the person to go into the council agenda and get the agenda number. And so it makes more work for the person trying to give public comment to figure out the city's system. So maybe it's just a window of time before a meeting. And I would think most people are interested. I'll talk to Sally afterwards. I think people are probably most interested in the comments before the meeting as opposed to while they make comments afterwards. Anyhow, a couple of other just quick things. And so I also would like that, that people could send comments to council that's not published. So I don't want this to inhibit people. I know, you know, from time to time, we get com- we get emails and the reader indicates they'd rather it not be spread around, even though it is accessible. Yeah, even though it is a public record, they, they indicate, you know, like, please, don't just go disseminate it wildly. And, and also, doesn't happen too often, but we'll probably need to redact profanity. Just to thought. Yeah. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, and thank you for the, the dialogue. And Ms. Sandra, thank you so much for coming prepared. I, I was shocked. I was, I'm very impressed with that. I know for me, like, I'm constantly referencing the minutes or watching the video or reading prior meeting agendas when I'm, you know, trying to recall what happened at the meeting six months ago. And I think it would be very helpful to sort of have that, you know, in addition to have the public comment that was not on the video memorialized, right? Like, because I mean, I think for the most part, people's views will stay the same. And, and like one of the commentators had said, like, it's, it's great to be able to get all of everybody's views, right? Everybody's sort of thought. So, and, and also just the evolution of, of whatever that item is from six months ago, the public comment, to be able to compare to current public comment. Like, is, is everyone feeling the same? Are we feeling different about other things? So I do think, you know, looking forward as a council member, that would be a very helpful tool to have. So, and to have for reference. So, thank you.
Any further discussion, Councilmember Tomlinson?
I'll just jump in. I, I, I also fully support doing this. Really, we're getting back to doing it, right? So it went by the wayside for a couple of reasons. I think COVID, this agenda management, like trying to assimilate to this, but then COVID. And now we're online and many people are participating from their homes, so we can't print it out on the table. So I mean, I understand why we got away from it. So getting back to it, it makes a lot of sense and I appreciate your willingness, Sandra. And I think you're the best person to come tell us how it will be done smoothly and transparently and effectively for everybody. So, thanks.
Say, I'll ask Councilmember McAdams, did we provide enough comments, feedback? Okay, and staff? Any questions? No? All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I want to thank the public for their participation and listening in. Of course, staff as always for being here. And my colleagues, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night.